When we finish up the budget today. So I'd like to invite Sarah from Pilot Hill, please.
Sarah, Commissioners Richardson and Ibera, thank you so much for taking the time to have us come in this morning. I am just wanting to give you an update on the stages that we are really focusing on with the Pilot Hill project. We've been really fortunate to have such a supportive community to get the project this far in less than three and a half years. We've been able to secure the property, go through the process with the community of creating a really extensive land use plan, which will take us probably 10 to 15 years to completely build out. And then this first year and a half, we really focused on phase one of that plan. Phase one includes 21 of the 40-plus miles of trails in the system. It also includes really defining and refining the main trailhead access area for the property. The goal for that trailhead area is to do numerous things, really address the challenges that we have with the Pilot Hill area in terms of our goals for protecting the aquifer recharge area, our goals for protecting the wildlife, and also for facilitating the opportunity for our community to really get out and enjoy the space in really safe ways. Part of the feedback that we got in the planning process included the need for school buses to park in an area where the students can enter and exit the buses safely and in places where they aren't, they don't have concerns of having it be, you know, right off Grand Avenue where there might be additional traffic or risks associated with that, in an area where multi-users can access the area. So people with small vans with bicycles on the back of them all the way up to large pickups hauling horse trailers for access. And then also really being respectful of our partners that are adjoining private landowners, making sure that we're pulling people in far enough on Grand Avenue that they don't accidentally turn into Sherman Hills or one of the other neighborhoods and create trespassing issues, also so that we don't have too many cars parking right off 45th and Crowe, which is kind of a locals' favorite access, but also again, a neighborhood with lots of small children. So what we've really settled on is the east end of Willett Drive for the primary trailhead. We went back to the University of Wyoming and negotiated with them to add acreage to the initial agreement that we had with them so that we could consider a parking lot off of Willett on the north side of the street on the Jacoby Ridge property. So that process has been approved by the trustees of the University of Wyoming. The Pilot Hill Board will be looking at those amended agreements, management agreements at our upcoming meeting. We've also gone forward with the city of Laramie to put forth a proposal for what this main trailhead might look like. Again, addressing the need for school bus parking, five to six school buses at a time. The middle school's already approached us about having a cross-country meet this fall. An area for horse trailers that is designated so that the horses aren't crossing through the traffic pattern areas but can access the property safely, an area for 50 to 70 cars. And the reason we chose that size is because areas such as the trailhead parking at Taisity, their capacity is 50 cars and it's constantly overflowing, so we're trying to project for future growth. And then also an area where we can eventually have some sort of comfort stations for our guests and visitors, water, restrooms, also a shade shelter of some sort, benches and picnic tables, all those types of things that you might find at a city park that would allow people to come and gather, host events, et cetera. The one piece of variance that we're really requesting from the city of Laramie is, has to do with the paving restrictions that the city of Laramie has on parking lots. We're requesting that they waive the paving for this area, although we will continue to put in at least three handicap parking spaces and a paved sidewalk for handicap accessibility within the parking lot. The other thing that we're requesting a variance on is a sidewalk in front of the location because that sidewalk would not connect to any other sidewalks within a reasonable distance. We have not yet had an opportunity to really present in person to the city about this variance request, but we anticipate that we'll go toward that hearing in July. All of this is laying the groundwork for us to then try to compete for some of the ARPA funds that the state has set aside for recreational development. We were successful this last year in bringing in a sizable donation from a private foundation, the Hughes Family Foundation, to help us cover the costs of the remaining buildout of the phase one trails. But the parking area of the trailhead is a key component of phase one that we're really focusing on right now. Of course, in phase two and phase three of the project, there will be an additional 20-plus miles of trails that will need to be built, as well as hopefully working with our partners in the Forest Service to create some designated access trailhead sites in the Medicine Bow National Forest. So our biggest concern, we have two primary concerns with the board as we move forward with this project. Of course, I've already talked to you specifically about the buildout and the potential costs of creating the main trailhead and the access site. As you can see in those draft budgets that I presented to you, we're looking at anywhere from 1.2 million to over $2 million to build out the main trailhead entrance for this community off of Willett Drive. Much of that cost variance depends on whether or not we get the variance from the city. And then the other big thing is just the ongoing management costs of this project. I know that when the commissioners had the opportunity to consider whether or not we wanted to go for it and try to secure Pilot Hill, the first thought was, let's really be proactive and make sure that we're securing this critical property for our community, conserving it for the multiple reasons that we've already discussed. But as the appointed initial committee, the Pilot Hill Oversight Committee, that then transitioned to the nonprofit Board of Directors, has been talking about all along, we also need to be thinking strategically, long-term, about the ongoing management costs of the property. Right now, its costing is about $170,000 to $200,000 a year. And that includes all of the things like the permits, the leases with the state offices, state lands. It includes insurance, it includes just the management costs of repairing fences and maintenance, et cetera. And we do have one staff person as well. So if the commissioners have the opportunity to help us invest in either ongoing operating expenses or in establishing this primary trailhead, that would be a tremendous boost to the viability of this project. I personally really feel like the economic analysis that was done by the Center for Business and Economic Analysis is accurate in that once we have a fairly well-established property here in Laramie, it's going to create a large economic boost to this community, both in terms of property or sales taxes, excuse me, and just increase in opportunities for small businesses to leverage the recreation and tourism benefits that this brings to our community. Their initial estimate anticipating about 40,000 users a year is $5 million annually for the community and added benefits. We've already, with our trail counters, noted that we have about 70,000 users on the property each year. Most of those we recognize are locals. But as the word starts to spread and as we have a real designated access point and trailhead, we'll start marketing it more aggressively to our neighbors to the south in the Front Range that are looking for areas to recreate in and hopefully come all the way into town and spend a little money while they're here. We also hope to be a good partner with our neighbors in the Medicine Bow National Forest and in Kirk Gaudi State Park. They're seeing significant impact and increases in users in their park areas. And we hope to be a partner with them and help kind of alleviate some of that stress so that we're all managing these areas well, we're not creating situations where the wildlife are being so disturbed that they're leaving, but we're preserving what's the best thing about southeastern Wyoming, which is our wild spaces.
Thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, just a real quick question, could you refresh my memory? I don't have it in front of me, the 12-5 that you asked for community partners, what was that for, Sarah?
That was for build out of the trail systems. Yeah.
Okay, is there any other questions? Okay. He ever anything?
Yeah, I have lots of thoughts. And maybe one thought is, I've never understood why the city doesn't have sort of a process for incremental improvement. You know, it's sort of like all or nothing, sometimes it ends up, sometimes it's something, you know what I mean? And so in a case like this, I guess, because I really, people don't know how to access the property without jumping off place that probably has a map or a legend. So this all makes a lot of sense to me, and it seems to me that what the city is asking for is not reasonable. It just seems like all at once might be unreasonable. So incremental improvement, you know, like gotta do some amount of it or the big lift, you know, 80% of it at the outset, and then, you know, the sidewalk that sort of goes to nowhere. I mean, it probably needs to be there eventually, right? It's about how heavy the lift is at the beginning, so.
Yeah, and I may have misled you. The city has not asked us for anything.
Well, this is just how the code is, so you have to ask for a variance.
That's true, but it's our option to decide, do we want a paved parking lot or do we not?
Right.
We feel like, quite honestly, there are city parks that have paved parking and it's wonderful because of the type of use that we'll be getting with this and because it is a natural space area, a wild space area, it honestly just does not make a lot of sense to us. If the city comes back, the city has only have this in their, in the planning department for a week. If they come back and they have strong concerns. No, if they have strong concerns with paving and some of these variance requests, we may need to go back to the table and say, we realistically don't feel like we can raise funds for more than this amount of a project and we could scale things back. My preference, and I think the executive committee felt like, we'd like to really lay the vision for what we believe we will need to do this correctly on the table initially, request the variance, and we'll see how the city responds to it. But I feel like we've worked hard to be good communicators with the city to really understand what the city's concerns might be in terms of things like the aquifer overlay. This, you didn't, SSI, it has 120 feet of satego overlay, so we feel like it's a safe location. We've been really respectful with the city's concerns about not impacting neighborhoods and communities. So I'm very hopeful that they will continue to also be open to the idea that it might not make sense to pave this specific parking lot where other parking lots in the city might be paved.
So I guess the question I have is, the thought about paving is based probably on the city's regulations, right?
Yes, I think it's part of the city code. And, you know, that I talked at length with Todd Fieser about, I happen to be on the Parks Board, about some of the parks that we have in town that do not have, that still have dirt parking lots. And in the long-term plan, they are planning to transition those. So it's something that I believe they're trying to do so that we have park areas that work well.
They probably don't want to get behind.
Well, and also that work well for the adjoining neighbors.
Yeah.
And so we are trying to be thoughtful in the same manner. Our neighbor to the west is the Jacoby Golf Course, so there's not a, we would not be impacting them by not having a paved parking lot. The only other residential neighbor to this site is across the street to the south, large, Alight, I believe it's called now, complex that is a, and they do have a paved parking lot, but those residences are far enough away that I don't believe that they would be impacted by blowing dust and other things that our unpaid law might cause.
Well, so my only comment was, is, I've always thought it's strange that the city in lots of ways doesn't allow for incremental improvement. Like, to me, I think if their parking lot's fine, but also a paved parking lot might be fine. But it's the question of how heavy the lift is, one lift, right? So I guess if I was Pilot Hill Inc. and I was going to present it to the city for a variance, I probably maybe wouldn't even ask for a permanent variance, just a temporary, you know, so that the organization had time to do incremental improvements rather than try to do that lift all at once. Do you know what I'm saying?
And I appreciate that.
That would maybe be a reasonable sort of point of negotiation. In other words, you're not saying, we don't want to do what you're asking us to, we just want five years or three years to, or two, or something.
Well, and I appreciate that advice, Heber. I don't know, you know, that would be a decision I would leave to the executive committee to consider if that would be something we'd want to come back with if we do find ourselves in a position where we need to negotiate. As I said, we really just put this forward about a week and a half ago. We'll go up for a conversation, we hope, around the middle of July. And if there's strong concerns, then we certainly will go back and talk about what might our options be. And I hadn't honestly thought about that, so I appreciate that, Todd.
Well, every business and now every developer sort of faces that. They need the incremental improvement option.
Yeah, and depending on whether or not we're a strong candidate for ARPA funding and can allocate it toward the trailhead, that may or may not be, you know, a direction we would want to take.
Sure. Any more comments about the community partners here? So it was 12-5, we approved 6,000 yesterday, did anybody have any thoughts in the evening about it?
I thought about it more, actually, I actually would like to go 12-5. The reason is, that gets leveraged a lot, I think.
It would, we would leverage it as part of the match when we go to request the ARPA funds. We will likely need to, they haven't sent out the requirements yet, but we'll likely need to have at least a 10% match for whatever we ask for, so that would be helpful. Any funds that we're garnishing for phase one would be helpful.
I'd be willing to increase maybe to 10.
And since it's a trail building?
Well, it's phase one. I believe the way that I put it in was the continuous continued build out of phase one. So phase one is the initial 21 miles of trails at the trailhead.
I can see myself in that number, since it's probably likely going to be matched, I probably will.
If it's matched at nine to one, right?
12-5, if that's. Can we make that change to 12-5, please?
Do you feel like Pilot Hill Inc. is a good candidate to be, you know, to be awarded that?
I feel like we're a very strong candidate. We've had a very close partnership with the State Parks Department all along. They're very well informed on our plans. They really are hopeful that Pilot Hill can be successful to, in order to really help them with management of Kirk Gaudi State Park in terms of impacted volume. So they look forward to having us go to Pilot Hill.
They probably needed to siphon some people off, because Kirk Gaudi's.
Kirk Gaudi's packed, and it's great that, you know, they have people utilizing their trails and then hopefully they'll come over and use ours for a day and steal cap there or come to Laramie and spend money. You know, it's a nice southeastern Wyoming partnership.
Sure.
But I'm much pulled, does Pat Harry to have a, for ARPA to lead, who gets?
Well, Patrick's department is managing the process. I met with him last week and he let me know that because our project is pretty much shovel-ready, it stands a good chance. We, of course, there are a lot of competing projects around the state. I can't name at least 10 or 12, but also are very hopeful and are shovel-ready. And we didn't quite get as much money as initially was asked of the legislature, but I know that the 14 million that's available will be leveraged well across the state. And I do feel like we're strong candidates. But they also are saying their average grants will probably be less than a million dollars.
So we will suck up all money?
As the commission is wisely spreading the money around, I'm sure they will as well. Thank you for your time, I appreciate being able to come forward.
You bet. And then, can we hold off on the fair board in the library until the end? So that if everybody has to get back to work, we can get to work as quickly as possible. So I was just, guys, I'm just going to go down the list like we did again yesterday, just to finalize the peace department. So fire Christine, that group. I don't suspect we need to do anything with fire, we fully funded that. Commissions, you have something that you would like to address? Okay, public health, Jennifer did some work, I don't know if you saw it, an email about us being able to bump up the salaries of the state. Jennifer, are you online?
I am, can you hear me?
Got you, thank you.
Um, so.
Button takes a long time, it's weird like that.
So were we talking about the WIC monies for the nurses that we were discussing?
Public health, not necessarily WIC.
Oh yes, not WIC, I'm sorry, I was working on a WIC thing earlier this morning. So with public health, I emailed the nurse manager that Kim had been working with on the Public Health Nurse MOU and asked the question about whether the county could add additional funds to the public health nurse salary if they're budgeted for in their own funds. She checked with the person who oversees all of the public health nurses at the state, and they said that that was acceptable. So if this commission decides that they want to add money to the public health nurse salary, that is something that you can do.
Okay, is she giving a guidance on if we add money, that they'll subtract the same amount of money for the public health? Does it save the state money?
Um, she did not, so what she said, let me pull this up so I can read it to you, look at it, just. So it says that we can supplement the funding. So I think, I think in doing that, we can, that they wouldn't reduce what they are already providing, but we can supplement in addition to that.
Thank you, Kim, do you have anything to add for this?
Yeah, so first off, thank you for even like thinking about this and looking into it. I think that is fantastic. You know, we've always had turnover problem in keeping nurses, and this just shows that like we're making an effort, you all are making an effort where the state is lacking. My only thought, so we will find out, the end of June is what I understand of what their idea of a salary rate is. So I can get, I'll let you know that information. As far as like bringing equity, so I do have, I've hired two other nurses, I'm not so worried about that because I just hired them. But Claire has been there a couple of years, so you guys had mentioned Victoria. So I just want to see if we can get a little bit for Claire as well, not like nearly, what, like, doesn't need to be bumped up, but if we could, just to keep like equitable and to know that everybody is appreciated through COVID.
That's what my question is, do you have any state nurses?
Yeah, so right now, there is just Claire and Victoria.
Do you have a number for the combined? We were benchering about 6,000 when we thought it was just one position.
Yeah.
What is, do you have an idea about it yet?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, let's see, if we could, like Claire's at 53. I was thinking maybe if we could get her up to like 57. And like a ugly guy, she's a mom who doesn't get any child support, and we would love for her to stay. You know, it's hard in this town with rent and bills, so.
It's really all about a top number.
Yeah.
Probably is at your discretion.
Yeah, well, I think if we move Victoria up into Jana's price range, that seems fair, seven years. And then maybe Claire, I would say 58, 59 would be my top, would be fantastic.
So you're looking at 5,000?
Yeah.
And so if the state came back and was magnanimous and got us most of the way there.
Yeah.
Then if we, I don't want it to be, I don't want them to bring one condition to Jana and she just pull on, right?
Yes, I do not, that's not my intentions either.
So would 10,000 cover those two raises, or what do you think, or less, depending?
I.
So 4,000 for the less experienced person and 6,000 for the more experienced?
I think that would be reasonable.
Just your journey?
I mean, just the fact. I was thinking, I mean, you know, it's hard to even try nurses, let alone keep them for three years, but I mean, I would be.
11, how about you, Heber?
I am fine with that.
Guys, did you hear that? Instead of the six, we added five more to that.
The state nurses.
It would be super great if the health department, the Department of Health would take care of this.
It would.
In a year or two, so that.
By July.
And as soon as I get that number, I will let you know what it is, and then we can always rearrange, you know.
We know if in the state's budget, I mean, do they already have the ability to do that? Or are we a year out? Because you know, the states, they have a fiscal year that starts.
Yeah, and they approve raises for all of the Wyoming Department of Health. But from what I'm gathering from my regional supervisor is that, you know, we will find out till the end of June, and it'll probably be like a couple hundred bucks. It's going to be like 1% costably.
Gotcha.
Like, they said, don't be expecting like it actually.
So they're not going to correct it, efficiency?
No, no, but they're going to offer a raise, which is like silly to call it that, right? Like, I mean, for the state employees who have been there, like, a lot of.
Raise to leave a low market.
Yeah, and like it's hard, like you said, I mean, you know, we, my husband and I rent, it's expensive to live in this town. And I moved from a big city, and you're like, you know, when you're a single income, like, and that they think that that is fair, but I don't know how to change their minds. I mean, apparently supervisors have been talking about it till they're blue in the face, but you know.
We will talk with the WCCA, I feel strong about this.
Yeah.
So then we're going to lose people, right?
Right, and then how do you fill those, like, you lose good people? And like somebody mentioned, I can't remember, maybe her, from, you know, when you have a good group of people that actually, you're a small office and that work well together, you know, it can be hard to find, we definitely went through our turmoil with a previous nurse that just did not work, you know? And so I appreciate the, just everything that you guys have done to us, thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Maintenance, Rose is on vacation.
So is that 18,002 total?
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to make sure I have the right number.
But I'm sure we would have, if, or anybody else who's not here, in case we would probably have some slash in commission salaries or cash, if somebody came who was on vacation, we had made mistake. So I'm just going to close right by the maintenance, EMA doesn't appear. If you have any thoughts about EMA, as far as. Yeah, okay. And so, Sarah.
Just quickly on EMA.
Yes.
Remind me what you guys did yesterday, did you fund EMA to the top?
No, we asked, have what they needed, that person was requested, because that person was new.
All right.
So in the application, the application was due right when we started this conversation about salaries. So I had asked you all what you would like to do and you guys just said put in the full market. So that's what we did in the application. We put the full market value, the recommendation Christina had made, we put that whole amount. Um, the application is already submitted. Chances are we're gonna get that entire amount. However, um, this, this grant does not allow us to move money in and out of salaries. So what we have submitted is what we're getting. So we're either gonna be turning money away or we can get perlet full amount is what will happen.
Fair enough. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Thank you for that. Commissioners, any thoughts or concern? I mean, it's grant money.
Well, it's, it's.
Yeah, um, the, because that position's required by the state. I have even asked Ashley, our contact over there beforehand, before we even put in the raise and the full time for two positions. Um, and she said, it looks like there's more money for salaries this year. Albany County's problem in the past was we didn't have the matching funds for it. Well, we did have the matching funds this year. It's what I requested going for the application. Um, so it chances are very likely that we'll be getting that money.
So essentially what we're asking you is to go ahead and fund that full position. Because that, we're betting that that salary is gonna get funded from some other entity. But having that money on hand does two things. One, it shows that we can, with the state that we can match and that makes our application much more stronger. And two, in the event that something horribly goes wrong, we actually have the funds set aside to keep that position, which again, we're statutorily required to have.
Yeah, I don't have any problem. I had forgotten that we had, you know, you have to forgive us sometimes. You know, we approved a grant application when we come to this part. And we've, we can't connect those in our minds because it was, because we went through five hundred things since then.
Right.
Yeah, this would just happen to come right when you guys were starting the conversation on salaries that Christina had just made a presentation. So it was just weird timing for it all.
Well, and soft money is interesting, like years ago when we did nasty bunch of things that we had to do, we had no choice. The people on soft money were somewhat protected. I mean, because their funding wasn't from a general fund. So, you know, it's a, it's a weird thing when you're in the, the group of employees. You know, I mean, I, probably EMA will never stop being funded, right? But there are some sort of soft money things that could go away or be cut, right? So you live and die by that, you know.
Yeah, that, the only risk that we run through is if for some reason the federal government takes huge cuts out of their United States Department of Homeland Security, which then would trickle down to the Wyoming Department of Homeland Security as well. So, um, by all accounts, we haven't seen that. Um, and we don't foresee that happening really anytime soon, so.
Well, uh, this is one of the reasons that you guys got that late night email from me. Because I was like, I'm sure we missed something.
Yeah.
And this was, you threw it all on him right there. I know I didn't give you a whole lot of time, but.
That you remind me about Kate. She was recently moved up to full time, right?
Yeah, she was. Um, she used to be the assistant, the EMA assistant.
Yeah.
And when Steph Baker got here, she wanted to move up to a full-time position and even change her title. Um, so she is basically in an entirely new position. That's why there's no recommendation for a raise because she did just move into this position.
But did she get a raise with that?
Everybody good?
Good.
So that would be sixty-eight oh two.
Right, thank you.
All right, next up, Sheriff. Any thoughts, concerns, issues that we didn't know about?
We're trying to find our numbers if we can just go over those one more time. So I know that we, we fully funded everybody, cooks, evidence tech, maintenance, lieutenants, and what did, what was the decision on the sergeants?
So the sergeants.
All got twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred. And then the lieutenants were fully funded.
She was about to say something.
Oh, so just because we're in a weird timeframe, because we already started the step in, or sorry, not stepping grade, but, but you know, the years. So twenty-three hundred, most of those sergeants are going to be starting their year two. So where are we putting that twenty-three hundred? Are we putting it at where they're you, year two and then twenty-three hundred? Or are we putting it at year one, twenty-three hundred?
This is why I hate bifurcated salaries. I gotta tell you.
So then the, the follow-up question is then you guys are just essentially saying, here's the twenty-three hundred for all the sergeants and then we'll go ahead.
You, you figure it out.
Yep, that makes sense.
We don't wanna micromanage you that much. That's your problem.
We understand and we thank you.
Well, we're trying, we're trying to give guidance from what we like to see.
Yep.
And I gotta tell you, I'll just be honest with you, I will pull salaries after this is all said and done. And I'll take a look at what did we recommend and what actually happened. So if somebody dumped sixty-nine hundred into one sergeant and got zero to the other sergeant. I'm gonna be very disappointed. We'll have a conversation, right? But you know, you know, one, two, five percent, whatever, however you want to decide, I mean, that's not gonna.
Okay.
So.
Well, and interestingly, because probably other departments have more or would use more sort of discretion or subjectivity in that way. But when it's law enforcement, you guys sort of have rank and time as your structure. So here's pretty structured.
It's already essentially built in. It's the twenty-three hundred that comes for each one. We just can build it into the, into the existing salaries to go from there, so.
Right, it's like, it's like a, it's like a base pay thing. So I don't even, to me, I don't even know if it matters.
Now, the twenty-three hundred, that's.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep, no, we'll be able to, like I said, we'll be able to get it in there for each sergeant the way we want it to. So it makes, that makes sense.
Rebecca, just to give you the deviations from what Christina suggested, if that's something you're interested in.
Yes.
We doubled the detention coach supervisor. So it was requested twenty-eighty, we added forty-one sixty. Uh, we timed it a half, the detention coach, so twenty-eighty was requested, thirty-one twenty was allotted for each one of those positions. Uh, and then assistant office manager, thirty-five hundred was requested, we went to twenty-six thirty-two. And then we discussed just the sergeants were the only difference from all those requests. So you have a total of fifty-six nine nineteen. In the budget. Any questions about that?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Good.
All right, moving on, attorney. Kurt's available. Jennifer, you know Kurt's in court or? People, yeah, well, I think we covered the major pieces with him. It's the ones, the other ones that we did the cola with that. I don't know.
Jennifer was texting and she just wanted me to mention to you guys that for state, Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, for attorneys, the attorney's office gets thirty thousand dollars from the state for attorney and fifty thousand dollars from the state for Kurt's position, right?
It will, yes.
Okay, she just, she wanted me to let you guys remind me that.
Thank you, thank you.
I thought that the legislature upped the match. So it used to be thirty and I think they moved it up, so it's half, right? So thirty is half of a sixty thousand dollar position. But I thought that they, so maybe that was the max that they would pay before. So that paid somebody ninety, the state was paying a third of it, right? But I thought that in this session, they, they moved it to fifty max. So it means that they would pay up to half of a hundred thousand.
Chairman, sorry, sorry. I, I texted that to Bailey because I was on the phone with Kurt. He has car trouble, so he's walking in right now. He's not there yet. So the state pays for each full-time attorney that is not the elected. The state pays thirty thousand dollars to the county per attorney. For the electeds, for the elected county attorney, I believe it's fifty thousand dollars. Up to fifty percent or fifty thousand dollars. And that may have changed. I, I am at home since the power's out in the one twelve and I don't have my statute books in front of me. But I know it's thirty-four each of the regular attorneys and I, at least fifty for the elected. So.
Yeah.
So Kurt just wanted to point out, um, for those raises that he had in his budget and that you'd authorized yesterday, whatever the total amount is of the attorney salary, the state recognizes that because those positions, attorneys make a ton of money in the real world, in the private sector. So they pay, the state reimburses the county for that portion of those. So whatever the amount is that the attorney's salaries are at, the amount the county actually pays is thirty thousand dollars less than that. And this year, all of the attorneys in our office will have been there the full year. So there won't be any discounted percentage of, of that. Because they pay it on a provo, or a prorata basis if their attorney is only there part of the year.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's jump in as when he gets here, if he has any questions.
Okay.
Okay, well, I can tell you what we actually settled on.
Okay.
So we did twenty-five hundred for the chief deputy. We did cola for the legal assistance, because discovery assistant, and then the civil attorney. We did the other civil attorney at fifty-five, we went sixty-eight. Um, we did.
When did we do this?
Uh, seven twenty-five.
Okay.
We did thirteen thousand for the other civil attorney. We did seven thirty for the criminal felony. The next one was vacant, the misdemeanor attorney, we went seven hundred fifty. And then misdemeanor sexual assault, the misdemeanor violence attorney, we went ten thousand. So a total of three seven three two oh, is that correct, Kayla?
It'd be seven. I might be missing some. Can you go one more time?
Yeah, so it's, I had seventy-five hundred for the attorney-elect, twenty-five hundred for the chief deputy.
Oh, sorry, that's, that's a grimy twist. That's why it's not in there. That's why it should be. Okay, because she's grimy. Okay, go ahead.
And then just going down five fifty-three, five fifty, five twelve, five hundred, seven twenty-five.
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, move, uh, treasurer, we're just gonna jump to that one because I don't see anybody in the assessors' office here, so.
I don't have any.
Okay, uh, so I have. I have five five two six four for the treasurer's office. Is that what you guys have?
Two five two six four, yep.
Okay, uh, we can go through the assessors because maybe you guys have something. Uh, the assessors' office, I have forty-six oh six two. You guys have any thoughts about the assessors' office? Silver or Heber?
I talked to Chelsea a little bit more and she was happy.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
She wasn't even asking. Forty-six oh six two, so I have.
Okay, so that, Stacy.
It means that in the future, you know.
She wants.
As there's more grows or more properties to assess or the technology, you know, I mean, it won't stay like that forever, but. She found a way to get her done.
So I'm not sure if you guys had a conversation or reshared the conversation I had with Stacy about one person was not at forty thousand. And so that person, we did move to forty thousand. So that's eighty-two hundred. So I have a total of twenty-one five seventy-five. I could read them to you.
I'm gonna read them down the line.
Sure, seventy-five hundred, six twenty-seven, seventeen hundred, eighty-two hundred, twenty-nine thirty.
Yep.
And six eighteen.
Yeah.
Stacy, any, any concerns, questions?
That's, that's what I have to, and thank you for adjusting that one that we discussed yesterday.
Stacy, but you also mentioned yesterday that you have somebody with longevity that you would like to see.
Both of my, actually both of them that are getting the, the cola. And I understand that. I mean, that's across the board. That's not just my people. So I know Jackie has the same, same concern and I have, I have some in my reserve that I can probably get them just a little bit extra to, so I think I'll be okay.
So without naming names, those positions, what do they pay?
Sixty-two seven, sixty-two, seven hundred, it's sixty-one thousand eight hundred. If that's, if I'm reading that right, Stacy's all right.
That is correct.
So the, the comment I have about that, a person who's been here a long time, we appreciate them, right? We value their experience. What I would say is that in the market, in the real world, at some point, you sort of get to the
Right.
To the top of what a physician should pay for what it is, right? If you worked somewhere for thirty years, you can't just get raises forever and ever till you're ninety thousand for a position, which should pay sixty-five, right? So what might feel like we don't appreciate them isn't that, it's that there's a pay range for certain jobs and, you know. I don't know if I'm a, if like I am, if I'm a food pumper and there's a range that my employees can make on their ground, but I pay them well, you know. My employees make more than about half of the county employees to do what we do. So it's kind of interesting to me, but, but, um, but I can't, I can't always give them raises forever. Like there's a, they'll hit a max and they would have to change a career. You know, or get more responsibility or something, does that make sense? So that's my, that's my thoughts as to why. I mean, so a cola makes sense because life gets more expensive than, you know, necessarily to go backwards. But they could be getting to the, kind of to the limits of what a position like that should pay.
Well, if you do the numbers, if the ranges that were provided, um, they're just, for instance, the chief deputy, she's just two hundred dollars up over, gets two about hundred dollars over the average of that range. But the high end is seventy thousand and she's at sixty-two seven.
Right.
She's mine, yeah, she's.
And a deputy has the responsibilities and the authority to be elected in their absence.
Right.
So there could be some distinction made between that and the other positions, right? But that, that's my point.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, they're in the range, but. Sorry, I need this conversation to do something. We might have to, I'll do it in other places, so.
Which, I'm, I'm okay with what we've done. I just, that was, that, that's my explanation for how I view it. And I, I don't know what your view is. That's just, that's how I view it.
This thing is an inexact science. You do the best you can and hopefully you're.
Yeah, and this is just this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Stacy. Extension, looked like we put in what they requested. Or, but Christina thought was right, so thirty-nine nine seven. Is that what you have, Kayla?
Sorry. Yep, three nine nine seven.
Do you have twenty-one five seven five for the clerk's court? So that takes us to WIC. And so, seven-three-thirty? Everything is approved. Any comments, commissioners? Okay, coroner. We went, uh, forty-two-sixty-two, uh, chief deputy and two-hundred-and-forty for the assistant deputy, uh, for a total of forty-five-oh-two. Any concerns, any thoughts? Okay. Uh, drunk court, but we went, uh, ten-forty, but this is a grant, so, for ten-forty in each position. So maybe we made the same mistake in this one that we made, no?
Which position is this one?
It's a pure specialist and a data entry office assistant.
Yeah, so these are the ones I said the grant doesn't start until October one, so you guys are welcome to budget just for the three months.
Yep.
Um, but we, I actually am applying for that one this afternoon. And it, from what I've heard, we're gonna be getting the same amount like what we've been getting the past couple of years. Um, but no guarantees until I leave the agreement, so.
Okay, so for the three months, I put a face holder of like twenty-eighty, but I'm not sure why I put that number, I mean, it's fairly close.
Ended up coming out to just under a thousand.
Under a thousand?
Yep.
What is that number, just under a thousand?
Uh, nine-sixty-five.
Okay, thank you. HR, uh, question twelve-six, we went twenty-eight-fifty, uh, and let's get Nunez, uh, Ed Cole. Any concerns, questions, commissioners? Okay, and moving right along, clerk, uh, at a total of seventy thousand three-sixty-nine, is that what you called that?
Yes.
And Jackie, tell us how we could have done better.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on the work that was done yesterday. As you know, I ask for additional compensation for my employees who have devoted themselves to a career in Albany County government. In particular, there are five employees who have a combined one-hundred-twenty-seven years of experience. And they have all expressed their desire to commit to an additional thirty-seven years. These employees oversee at least three employees along with training and supervision. They are not ready to retire. In fact, they are at their prime because they have the most knowledge of anyone and continue to build on that every day. The number of their ages are irrelevant. These five employees are incredibly valuable to the entire county. My employees don't have the luxury to leave at five P M. on the day before the New Year's holiday because we must complete all of the work for the New Year conversion. At the end of the last working day of the fiscal year in June, my employees stay late working to transmit all of our revenues to the treasurer. During parts of the election cycle, these employees are working sixty-plus hours a week at a minimum, assisting the election team with write-ins and reconciling in preparation for the canvassing board. The responsibilities and knowledge these five employees have cannot be overstated. They are at the front lines of this government, dealing with the most difficult tasks. They face poorly mannered customers. They set up to assist widows still crying from the loss of a loved one who need assistance in transferring titles, recording deeds, or finding out what they need at all. The people who are lost and helpless in government processes rely on these employees to assist them more than anyone else. I ask that you consider my initial request for my budget presentation. I am asking for an additional five thousand four hundred dollars to allocate to these fine individuals who are true public servants for Albany County. They are truly invaluable assets and it is our responsibility to treat them as such. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Jeff, what was that request?
Five thousand four hundred.
And Jackie, could you just, uh, we're in here electronically. I have one, two, three, four, five that we did not meet, but, uh, with Christina, um, so is your budget, sorry, I didn't memorize it, um, equals to what with Christina, or is there something, a different number that you're requesting than the one that's proposed to Christina?
It's just an additional more than what Christina had suggested.
Okay, could, could you, can we go down those first? That would be great, that would be helpful to me.
I will tell you that, um.
I think we just go by, um, title. Because I think sometimes we get lost in the personality and not the title, sharing it really is the title for me.
So, um, we can start with the, um, office manager,
Okay.
uh, who is currently at, um, fifty-nine-one, um, with thirty-three years of experience. Basically, the recommendation is to go, um, to the, um, sixty-three thousand dollars.
Did you agree to that? That's thirty-nine?
That is one of the employees who I believe that should receive a little more. In fact, she's the, the longest, um, employee in my office with thirty-three years of, um, knowledge and experience. Um, when I compare that to other, and, and I know it shouldn't be a comparison of department to department of employees, but when you look at some of the other salaries in other departments, she's slightly higher with probably twice, if not two and a half times more of knowledge and experience and commitment to the county.
So what is that number? So thirty-nine was the, thirty-nine hundred was the number we received from Christina, what would that number be?
Uh, I would like to move it to five thousand.
Okay. All right, and then the next one, I'm guessing, is assistant clerk. Was the assistant clerk three?
Um, yes.
And, uh, we had a request for three thousand to fund at twenty-five-seventeen, what would be your request?
Again, I would like to, in that particular, um, individual, um, moving, I believe we're looking at the salary amount of proposed at the fifty-seven-nine-thirty-four, is that correct? Are we looking at the same line item?
No, but looking at, uh, the forty-nine-two, uh, was recommended for fifty-two-two and we went to fifty-one-seven-seventeen.
Uh, actually, um, leaving that employee, um, where it's recommended at this time?
Twenty-five-seventeen or at the three thousand?
At the, uh, forty-nine-two, the recommended is to move her to fifty-three-six-ninety-five, is that correct?
Oh, okay, so I'm looking at a different one, uh, but that was election clerk two that you talked to me about, right? Forty-nine-eight, there it goes, fifty-three-six-ninety-five.
Uh, uh, the election clerk three is at forty-nine-two, not forty-nine-eight.
Oh. I guess we must have a difference, right, you hear?
No, I followed it down.
Christina put longevity in.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alrighty.
Okay. So we want to talk about election clerk two, I'm hopeful.
Right.
And, and so you would, Christina requested thirty-eight-nine-five, which we funded, you would like that to go higher.
I would like that to go to five thousand.
And the next person?
Uh, the next person is, um, uh, at fifty-eight-five.
Okay, read this aid recording.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the recommended is, um, for her to, uh, go to, if we're looking at, um, Christina's recommendation of six hundred and two dollars, she has twenty-seven years of experience. I would like her to go to sixty-two thousand.
Thirty-five hundred. And we would, we did the cola, Christina recommended fifteen hundred, I'm guessing, so. All right.
And then, um, the next employee is, um, at sixty-three.
Sixty-three-nine?
Sixty-three-nine.
Okay, and it was recommended go to seventy, which we did sixty-one-hundred, we did forty-six-twelve.
Right.
What would you recommend for us?
I, I would like, like it to be a flat five thousand.
And that's one, two, three, four, where's the fifth one?
Um, the, um, administrative assistant, who's at fifty-six-four. Towards the top.
I don't.
It's assistant.
Okay, okay, Kayla, thank you.
Christine, the recommendation was fifteen thirty-four. I'd like that to go to, uh, flat sixty thousand.
Well, that would be thirty-six hundred.
And I think my numbers, I hope they match up. I was doing this at the late hours of last night.
You're up too. You need thirty-five, yeah, something. Help with the math, but it might be a bit more than fifty-four hundred.
Is it a little more than?
Maybe, maybe it's fifty-four more than Christina, maybe it's probably slightly more than what we recommended.
Kayla would like us to go. If we can go top of the ones to make sure I've got.
Okay, so what I, so what I, you want Jackie's, uh, request?
Or just go all of them if we could, just to make sure we have.
The ones we approved last, yesterday?
Yep, let's just do all of them, if we could, Pete, thank you.
Do that, so I started seventy-five hundred, twenty-twenty-five, fourteen-twenty.
And Jackie wanted five thousand.
Yeah, well, I thought we were doing the proof.
Okay, perfect, yep.
Yeah, is, do you want something different?
Nope, that works, that works for us, yep.
Okay, uh, so fourteen-twenty is the third one down. Okay, fifty, thirty-four, seven thousand, twelve hundred, ten thousand, eighty-two hundred, fifty-seven, forty-seven, twenty-five-seventeen, ten thousand, thirty-eight ninety-five,
Two, twenty-five-seventeen. Gotcha.
Uh, yeah, excuse me, uh, election clerk one would be ten thousand. Three-eight-nine-five, six-oh-two, sixteen hundred, forty-six-twelve for a total of seventy thousand three-sixty-nine.
Yep.
And then if, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, from, from Jackie's recommendation, it would be seventy-five hundred, twenty-twenty-five, five thousand, thirty-six hundred, seven thousand, twelve hundred, ten thousand,
Yep.
eighty-two hundred, fifty-seven, forty-seven, twenty-five-seventeen, twice, ten thousand, five thousand, thirty-five hundred, sixteen hundred, five thousand. And I'm not sure what that total was because they didn't.
Eighty-four-oh-six.
Eighty-four-oh-six, uh, so that would be.
Now it's three thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it's eight thousand more than recommended, probably fourteen, fourteen, a little less, fourteen. All right, commissioners? Any thoughts? So, well, I guess we'll just take the first one first, let's go down the list, how about that? So, um, that position is a fifty-nine-one, who's recommended at sixty-three, which is a thirty-nine hundred dollar raise. Um, we settled on fourteen-twenty, I guess that was because of the average of that salary.
Right.
Uh, being requested for five thousand because of longevity and, and still being with us for thirty, thirty-three years. Your thoughts on that?
Well, if you look at the, uh, proposed ranges up there, fifty-one to sixty-nine, giving her the, uh, five thousand, put her at sixty-four. But I'm not sure about it. What Christina gave us, Pete, on the.
Yeah, I, I, sorry. Okay, now, but, okay.
So that would give us, uh, put her at sixty-four, basically. And that's, um, towards the higher end, but it's not at sixty-nine, three-nine-three.
Oh, I'm sort of not inclined to go that far into the details, right? I mean, that's a decision that a an elected official makes, so to me, it's the commission's job to create a, a personnel line item. And so we're sort of building the personnel line item position by position. But it doesn't mean that the manager or the elected official has to use. You know, this, this is just a, a process to construct the final muster. It's not necessarily, right? It's not necessarily a mandate, so.
No.
So the, the point is then, as a commission, we have to think, you know, you, you can, you can and don't ever take money away from someone, right? So this isn't a one-year obligation, this is a going-forward obligation. And managers and there is a framework, right? Like Pete was saying before, we have the, the step and grade, you know, there's a range, a salary range based on the job description, where they fit into the salary schedule. So it would be pretty weird if somebody went outs outside, you know, it's sort of like, we're building a, a a personnel line item, you know, for their budget, but they still get to decide how they're going to use it across their entire group of employees. But we're basically saying, but we're gonna commit that year after year, possibly, plus some, so so for me, I, I, um, I don't manage the people and, um, I don't want to micromanage an elected official or or a department. I just want them to have the tools they need to be able to do and what they need to do in their department. So I like what we're doing, um, in my entire time as a commissioner. So this is the eighth year I've never been in a position like this where there was, we were always trying, we were always going the other way, trying to find a way to make it work. Because we were short, right? So this is a unique place for me, um, because it's weird to haggle over sort of what we think someone's value is, or whatever. Like for me as a commissioner, I can't, can't do that, all I could do is fund, you know, fund the personnel in each department, but I, I don't necessarily want to overfund it, right? And, and, um, so the discussion's kind of strange because it's like, since we're talking position by position, it could seem like we're making decisions about what positions pay, but we're not, we're just making decisions about what the total is. I mean, an elected official or a department could still go back through and and move the numbers around some, as long as they stay within the salary schedule, set, step and grade, right?
Right.
You, you can't show preferential treatment to your favorite employee out, you know, to the point that it goes outside the the salary structure that would raise flags to your point, so.
Right, but if, if they request eighty-four thousand, we give them seven thousand, we have needs of determination.
We impose a limitation on.
Right. And so the, the only way I think for me to be make it reasonable is to build it by position and then hand them that amount of money and say, do what you will.
Yeah, so I, I get what I'm saying is I like what we're doing, um. I just have never been in a position where I could even have the option to fund a full request. So it's weird to be in that position.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, I guess the office manager, the request from Christina was thirty-nine, we did fourteen-twenty, Jackie's doing five thousand. Which of those numbers would you guys, or some other different number, like, show us?
I'm the keeper, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna get down to this squabble over fourteen thousand. I'm okay with that, I think it works.
To me, it's a question of long-term sustainability, like, so I like that we build a budget position by position because then there's a structure and a logic behind it, other than, it's not somebody saying, well, I'd like an extra thirty thousand for my personnel line item, okay? Right, we've, we've looked at the pieces that get us to that place.
Would you guys be reasonable, would you be available to just the thirty-nine hundred for this first position? Would you guys be reasonable, would you be amenable to just the thirty-nine hundred for this first position that was requested? I've gotta hope that, that we.
If we're gonna go down this road, then we're gonna need to do it in other places in the budget.
Oh, wait. Just wait next to me, please.
Well, we have the, we have the treasurer, I mean, I'm sorry, the clerk of district court in the same position.
Well, those, those were not requested from HR. We had added to those positions. I mean, we had, there was zero who requested from HR with that.
Got you. So you're saying that the, that we had an HR recommendation based in the salary, um, range?
Yeah.
That's different from the, there's a difference between the clerk and clerk of district court.
In those two positions. Now, I, I'm not an HR person, so I don't sure how those are derived, you know?
Right, I mean, if you have, if some mistake is made on the front end, then we, we inherited and processed that mistake without, you know? Like, I don't know what the, what those positions are paying.
Right.
And I didn't look to see what clerk three versus clerk of district court three gets paid, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So do you want to stick with what we had for the clerk, or do you want to do something different?
Yeah, I want to do seventy-seven.
Okay, what would you do?
I'm okay with what Jackie has proposed.
Okay, so you're all right with the eighty-four something?
Eighty-five, four-six.
And then, we did seventy thousand, three-sixty-nine as a total yesterday, Chris, Dean is at seventy-five-nine. What would be your okay with, Peter?
Well, and then a person doesn't have to use all of their labor line item, right? That's just the, the big bubble they have to live in. I mean, if somebody retires or quits and they have somebody come in at a lower start salary, you know, the point is, we're just saying, here's your bubble you have to put in. So I, I mean, uh, I'm okay, I'm okay going higher. I, I just think that, you know, maybe some money, I don't, I guess I don't really have a question of stewardship when it comes to, I've been here a long time and I've watched our elected officials and department heads operate, and they're good stewards. You know, this is not a wasteful place.
Yeah, I don't.
So, so again, I have to shift, like, it used to be that we didn't have any extra in anyone's budget, right? Not even for a damn paperclip, because it all had to sit with the commissioners, because we were so lean that people would need to come to us later for us to solve issues that might come up. And we, we couldn't have a little bit of extra in each coffee con, coffee can on the job, right? So in this case, we, we could have a little more in the, in the personnel line item. It doesn't mean that, that someone has to use it all, but it's a question of whether we're gonna allow, you know, what our top number is, that we allow somebody to have in their personnel line item, right? Does that make sense? I, I'm just at the, the thirty-thousand-foot view. The details matter, but, but in the end, like, from a commissioner perspective, I, I want something to be sustainable for our people and our budget year over year over year, so.
Yeah, so.
Does that make sense?
It does. I, I want to be consistent with what we, however, and so we've basically funded this essentially a little bit more, just a couple departments, what Christina recommended. And so this would be a departure from that, and so I'm amenable to choosing the number that Christina recommended. I just started with just seventy-five, nine-oh-one, and then let Jackie figure out the deeds on that. But.
I'm fine with that.
Five thousand, uh, six, five hundred, five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Because I think we have been at or under what Christina recommended on everybody else. And so I think that is, with the exception of a treasure rent for fifty bucks over the treasurers. So, any thoughts? Jackie, disappointing.
That will be fine. Any consideration is greatly appreciated. I know, I, I, I know that I, it's, it's a big ask. And, you know, I think probably outside of Stacy, we probably have the longest, long-term employees. And, and I realize every county employee is valuable, and so any consideration is, is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You bet. So Kayla's over there, we went with Christina's recommendations, seventy-five, nine-oh-one. And that is sold out. Okay. Thanks, appreciate that, Jackie, thanks for the insight. And finally, David, uh, so we had going down the list, Kayla, eight-fifty, uh, zero, forty-three, nineteen, five thousand, twenty-four, fifty-three, and then there was an Amanda, we'll figure.
I like the.
Think the budget just went up a thousand.
Just a thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the only question, there were a lot of moving parts for a small department. So the only question that I would ask David again is, you know, if you're gonna sort of combine and redefine positions, because now we're in a situation where we have to have somebody do wastewater engineering, right? Whether that's hire somebody separate or, but without going back through it, the question is, is, is that personnel line item enough for you to, to do what you need to do the way you would reorganize and take care of your people? Because in my mind, I can't, I can't wrap my brain around all the moving parts with, like, hard numbers. Does that make sense?
So is your question, so the position that will replace what Barney's doing, is that what you're talking about?
Well, mine is a more general question than that. When you made your budget presentation, you had, you had redefining and reorganizing positions to a certain degree.
Right.
Which means that it's hard to go the way we are, you know, here at the clerk's office, well, positions in there. We can go position by position, but we can't do that in yours, because there's gonna be some redefining. But it doesn't mean you need less money or more, it just means, so I'm asking you just the basic question. Can you do what you need to do with that labor budget?
I think so. I, I'm, I'm really trying to figure out what, what it is I have. So, um, I did get some information from Amanda, um, so I should have one, two, three, four, five, six positions? Is that what I still have? That, that's my question.
Yeah, so I, and I can go down the list of exactly what we have recommended at this point.
Okay.
If you would like.
Yeah, and, and I apologize, because this is partially my fault, because I, we, we talked after Christina had, came up with their salary schedule and things, and then, and I kind of did some finagling because of the retirement of Barney and, yeah, if you could just go through each of those, that would be.
So, starting at the top, uh, an increase of eight-fifty, um, and then the wastewater engineer, that's left open, because that is open. And then, next one down, requested forty-three, nineteen from Christina, we funded that fully.
Which was?
The office manager.
Okay.
So forty-three, nineteen, uh, to address coordinator, and I think he's moving to GIS.
Yes.
Recommendation of eighteen hundred, um, we went to five thousand for that position. The Amanda figure, the enforcement officer, uh, Amanda figured a thousand. And then additional, and then assistant planner, um, we fully funded what Christina recommended of twenty-four. So a grand total of thirteen, six, twenty-two.
So, so then we're missing the, the position that was gonna take over Barney. There was another assistant planner position that we wanted to fill or we discussed. Um, so I'm losing a position by what you just read off.
It's like a wastewater engineer, but it's held at twenty-nine, fifty an hour, is how I read it.
I have it at.
And it was a part-time position, so the question is, could you?
Okay, so you have it.
Yes.
So, yes.
It's just not on her sheet, because it was talked about after her sheet.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, but, but it's at twenty-nine, fifty an hour is what that comes out to be, right?
I think it was upped a little bit to forty-eight thousand a year, because the twenty-nine was at.
Well, the challenge that we have is that we probably can't replace the wastewater engineer with this, with that salary. You know, it was, that guy had a tremendous amount of experience, but it was, it was a part-time retirement. And for somebody who needs it for their real job, they probably have to be wastewater engineer and enforcement officer or, you know, there's, so the challenge for David is he has some full-time positions and some part-time positions. So, a, and the demands, because of the pressure on that office, the demands are going up.
So.
And they could be behind, you know, like in here, they might be in a situation, but, you know, where they can't keep up, but they don't. So it's almost, you know, like, you have to be able to process what comes in the door, and you have to have manpower to do that.
Right.
So David, in your narrative, you're asking for a requested amount of forty-two thousand to fifty-five thousand to cover that position.
Yeah, and forty-eight is what I think I landed on, and I discussed that with Christina. So, so honestly, Barney's position was only, he worked sixteen hours a week for like three or four months, and then he worked twenty-four for the rest. So if you say it's a twenty-hour-a-week position at the twenty-nine, fifty, that would bring it up to sixty-some odd thousand, honestly, if, if we're going full-time. So drop it down to forty-eight's less than what Barney was getting paid.
If he were.
If you're, if you were full-time, yeah.
But if you were going to develop the position and reorganize your office and advertise it and hire it, you probably wouldn't use a whole year's worth. So that maybe forty-eight would work if you're a quarter in.
No.
Right.
And I think forty-eight's fair, and I think it's, and I think I can get somebody for that amount. That's, that's where I planted.
But even if you couldn't, and you had to pay fifty-five, or I don't know what.
Right.
Forty-eight is a, as a placeholder is probably enough, because you're gonna hire on July one.
Sure, sure.
You have to work through how you want your department to look and all of that.
Right.
So, yeah, so that was my question, and I think we got to the answer. I think you're adequately funded.
I do too. But I wanted to be clear, because I was hearing different things.
Right, so twenty-nine, fifty, and twenty an hour, just round about is thirty thousand a year. From what Barney was being paid, so twenty-nine, fifty, half of a year is ten, forty an hours, twenty-nine. So we're about thirty thousand, so eighteen thousand additional dollars is what you're being requested. Whether it's a position, whether it's a contract with an engineering firm or whatever.
Okay.
It's already in the budget, though, forty-eight thousand is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, with that, are you all right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just want to, um, you know, express my appreciation for my, my folks. You know, it's been, we've had a lot of years where people don't get raises, and there are a lot of years that they're, they're underfunded and, and just not able to, you know, we're not able to like say, hey, yeah, this is a good thing, you want to stay here. I'm, I'm just appreciative that you consider Christina's recommendations and that you're doing what you're doing for my employees, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, Stacy.
Nice to be in a position where you can make a more livable wage.
Well, hopefully our under, our employees understand, like, in business, if you're in trouble, you can make investments, you can borrow money, you can fight your way out of it. If you're a competent businessperson, but in government, the legislature says, this is the law, this is your revenue stream, this is how you get it, and you got, and, and in the law, this, these are the responsibilities you have to do. So figure it out, lots of luck, right? And, um, so that's the challenge, right? I, I've always wanted to, to take different or maybe better care of my employees.
Thirteen, six, twenty.
You know, when economic activity in the private sector doesn't go, and we don't have revenue, but we just have to, but we, yeah. Right, and so that's always been a sore spot for me, but it, it's, it is what it is.
Yes, okay, and, and Kurt, thank you, David.
Yeah.
Kurt, uh, sorry that gave everybody such short notice last night, but is, uh, is what we recommended. Tell us how we can do better, I guess. And, uh, I know you weren't here for the prologue in my ramblings, but as I sat thinking about it yesterday, I thought, well, we've just thrown it off people and not had their feedback, and I would love to hear their feedback, because you know about the attorney's office way more than I do. And so I want to know how to do it better, knowing that we have sideboards in our minds, so.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity. Sorry I wasn't here for the beginning. Um, you know, and actually, I took your lead and started looking up, I don't know why I didn't do this before, but jumped on Miami State Bar website, click buying a job, um, and both Campbell and Carver are hiring for entry-level attorneys, and they're both seventy, um, so I think Christina was right on the money with, with the entry-level prosecuting position.
Yes.
So I think that is, that is, uh, that basically is a market rate. I also looked up the attorney general's office, well, Jennifer did actually for me, uh, and their minimum is sixty, but their market rate is seventy-four, eight-hundred, so that's kind of, I believe, where they're bringing people in right now. There's a lot of jobs on that, it's why we stay on our website right now, more than I think I've ever seen. Which is just the, the, the market troubles we have. We're lucky in our office, because we do have the intern program, which generally feeds our, our employee needs, um, and then does give us a step up, and Laramie is, is a sought-after location, the state of Laramie, which gives us a sell.
People would like to live.
Correct. People want to be here, so we do, we do get a step up in there. And I think in the future, you know, when somebody quits or retires, we're gonna have to refill these positions. Um, and I think, I think Christine's recommendations for the entry-level positions of seventy thousand, that's, that's correct. Uh, my next big ask was for the civil attorney. Christina didn't give a number, but did say it needed an increase. Uh, we were so focused, I think, on how low the, the low-wit folks were, um, that we got, maybe lost sight of everyone else. Um, and so seventy thousand, I think, is an entry-level position, but then you have an attorney with eighteen years of experience, and I make twenty-five hundred dollars more than that, does not seem fair.
Right.
I have attorneys, and I'm not, they're all good attorneys, but I have attorneys with three to four years of experience making seventy-five, and somebody with eighteen years of experience making twenty-five hundred dollars less, that's just not right. I, yeah, just not right. And that one, you know, I really think I have to fight toward, because what makes it right?
What makes it right?
Yeah, what makes, what, what's the dollar amount? I, I think we request seventy-five hundred, it would get, it would get that position up to eighty thousand, uh, which would put her just under the chief deputy, and really, that position's brilliant, and I could give her the title like that. She certainly deserves it as a chief civil deputy, yeah. She runs the civil side of the office, really what she does, uh, which is common practice in county attorney's offices throughout the state, to have a, a civil deputy that does that. That one, I, I really feel strongly about, that we, we gotta get that position on, uh, just for fairness, if nothing else. And that.
I don't know about fairness, but it's about market, about competition. So for me, you know, when we were going through, we, we were looking to correct the, our most egregious, agree, egregious deviations from probably what the market is that, and I noticed that, I just hadn't brought it up yet. And I actually am in agreement with you, also.
What do you want me to interrupt you?
Eddie.
Eddie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sometimes cheap gets expensive.
Yeah, it does, and you know, there's always a worry that greener pastures may come by, and then they lose that individual. It would be hard to find a replacement.
Well, greener pastures are already there. The question is, um, you know, disruption in people's lives is expensive and challenging, and lots of times, people like where they are enough that they don't chase the greener pasture, but some do, you know, just as a matter of personality, right? So, but I, uh, for me, it's not a calculation as much as it is just the, the going market rate, uh, you know?
So Kurt, um, yes, if that were to come to, so fifty-seven thousand was requested, that included. If that were to come to, so fifty-seven thousand was requested, that included your, your step in there, that wasn't funded, but fully. So yesterday, we did thirty-seven-three-two-oh, with seventy-five hundred, that would make it forty-four-oh-nine-five. Any problems with the COLAs? Is there anything else that we need to address?
I don't believe so.
Do you feel like forty-four-oh-nine-five, if that's what these guys do my numbers? So if we put seven, seventy-five hundred in.
They don't match, but we can go down and.
Okay.
Could be definitely a fat finger problem on my side.
So at forty, look, I guess, which ones do you want the?
Just, let's just go straight down the line.
From yesterday or today?
Whatever, today.
Okay, so seventy-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred. Five fifty-three.
Gotcha, yep.
Uh, five fifty, so it's twenty-five hundred, five fifty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Five fifty?
Yep.
Five twelve?
Yep.
Five hundred?
Yep.
Seventy-five hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Thirteen thousand?
Yep.
Seven thirty? Blank, because it's vacant?
Mm-hmm.
Seven fifty? Ten thousand?
Yep.
Is that reasonable?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kurt, I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you all.
Blank ones, will it get filled, or is that one that doesn't?
It, it will eventually get filled, I believe, but I'm, I'm doing the job right now.
Gotcha.
My hope is, we have an intern that, well, hopefully, we've already, year, fall, and he wants to be here and he's favored system, so.
So the mojo works, so you're gonna muscle, do a double job for a year?
I'm gonna try, that is, that is my goal.
So this commission should expect to fund that position this time next year?
Yeah, and I believe it's.
Or in three quarters of the full-time, if the person's not gonna have their bar, pass the bar until the fall, something, is that?
He would come on probably a year, this, a year from this September. Would be a good ask, but for this time, we're just not, we're just leaving the position open, unless something changes.
Thank you, Kurt.
But we didn't build that position into the budget pretty.
No, this is just additions to the budget, is my understanding, and so the budget doesn't.
So that position sits there?
It's just sitting.
It's just.
Gotcha. Yeah, we're not riffing. I'm not aware of us riffing. Conversation that I wanna have today. Intentionally, unintentionally, thanks, man.
Thank you. So the last.
Kurt, with victim witness?
Oh.
Was that all good?
Um.
It was seventy-two hundred that.
It was requested by Christina, and we did seventy-six fifty.
We gave a, a COLA to one of the advocates.
I think that's sufficient, and I, I will actually walk over and check with Vaughn right now, just make sure of that. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for catching that, and then the final one, IT. Pretty much beat up yesterday, any concerns, any thoughts over the afternoon, evening?
That, we're on, we're not doing road bridge project, IT?
Oh, excuse me, yeah, road bridge, excuse me, Rob sent me a note, could not be here today, and said, you appreciated the effort. Made to complete the road bridge project, and thank you at the budget committee for all your hard work, I appreciate the effort made to complete the road bridge budget as presented. So, there's that, and it, maybe it looked like you had a hand in the air.
I'm kinda part of Jack.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot, I didn't go down. Sorry, Bailey, thank you for bringing that to my attention, I didn't go far enough down. All right, tell us about it.
I'm here to advocate for myself.
You didn't know that I was gonna advocate? And actually, they were too.
It's hard, I can advocate for Brady every day, about the people I work with. It's hard, sorry. Um. Jackie, I'm, over the time I've been here, I've been doing the manager job by myself for quite some time. Just recently, Jackie actually promoted me to the manager, and what some people tend to forget is, I have my own department. I work under Jackie, I have my own budget, though, I manage millions of dollars, and, and I, I work hard for what I do. Sorry, I was not expecting to do this today. Over the past couple of years, with this COVID money, there's been a lot more out there than anybody's imagined. I've had lots of help with Tracy and Jackie and Amanda, Kayla, but it's been a lot of work. I also take on roles, I hope, well, when they start their job, the new drug court director, for instance. She's completely grant-funded, and there's things she doesn't know in the office, that she could go to Jackie or Tracy here, but she does to me. I do it for the EMA coordinator, I do it for, I didn't help her when she came on.
You have to mentor everyone to understand their grants.
Yes, and then it's beyond the grants, too, so going through the budget process, it's a very unique process. Tim has asked me multiple questions, Steph asked me multiple questions, it's a different process. And I would just like you to consider, just a little bit more for me. Sorry. I got better at this, I did. There are still things I'm improving on, like tears in front of you all for one, so I'm not asking for the highest, but I'm asking for just a little bit more. Like appreciation for what I do.
What are you asking? What would you appreciate?
Um, I'd like seventy thousand dollars, but I know that is a lot, and I know people figure along with me, so I would sixty-seven-five. I'd like.
And I wanna go seventy.
Yeah, I'm gonna advocate for seventy-two.
We talk about the amount of work that ARPA just dumped, you know, while you're, while you're gestating and giving birth, is pretty tough. I'm a man. I don't have hormones. No, I'm not on dangerous ground, I have five children, it's really tough to, to, to go out there and do what has to be done.
And, you know, she's also doing a prevention's job right now, she manages our cops and meetings, and does all of the communication, like, I mean, she literally steps in wherever. There is a need in a grant.
So I appreciate that, but we are talking position, right? So we have to make.
Just, so to, to go on that a little bit, I, you know, for my office specifically, we utilize Bailey a lot. For a lot of the savings that we've had for, you know, for that general front to bring back to it, it's because we've been able to utilize. Bailey's office to not only apply, but receive a lot of the grant fundings and stuff that we have. Coming from the university, especially not having a grant writer, and a lot of the offices that I worked at. It's, it's a, it's a very, very, very important position to have, the county is extremely benefited for having that position, and so. It's, it is important, and I'll advocate, not just because Bailey's such a great person, she does a great job, but that is, that is a position, especially in a government entity. That is essential, and so once you have somebody that's in there that can do that job, you wanna do everything you possibly can to keep them there. Because like I said, it, it brings in a ton of other money, and a lot of other cost savings in a variety of other different places. The, this position will pay for itself four to five times over, so.
As the direct supervisor of, of the prevention specialist, as well as drug court. This position, per se, Bailey, this position has done so much with the losses that we've had, we've had so many losses at drug court, you know, and. Bailey, or this position, whichever you wanna, or you wanna say it, has been instrumental in keeping everything going, quite honestly, and then she's gone beyond. When I first was supervising the other two prevention specialists, Bailey wasn't at our cops meeting, she's running them now, and yes, Tracy's there as well, but. She has got so much knowledge as far as grants and all, and so I really support Bailey, and just in the two years, or one and a half years that I, I've been here. I've seen Bailey grow in, in her position, I, I've seen her actually step up.
Well, so it may seem like I'm talking about the person, but I'm actually, it's really about the workload, and. The value, the, the amount of responsibility, and, and the liability.
Right.
So. The amount that we're churning through that office needs, and we keep, like, I, I gotta tell you, before COVID, I never imagined a workload like that, right? And if you mess it up, you know, and you can't pass an audit, and you get sort of on the blacklist, then it, it would cripple the county. Because we have a sort of a tax-based problem we rely on. On grants very heavily, it's a huge deal for this county, so. So I'm not necessarily advocating for the person, but I am for the position. I mean, we keep making the position bigger and bigger, and we don't necessarily. Push the salary along with it, and I, and actually, I don't think we've been able to, probably until this year. So it's my opinion that it might seem like a big ask, but we're making up for, th- this is like a deficiency correction, you know, in terms of salary. It might, that's, that's kinda how it goes through my mind as a commissioner. And I actually. Seventy is fine, I would even go seventy-two-five, like. I don't know, I don't. Sort of almost like compensation after the fact of tossing your entire Christmas vacation in, or Christmas, sort of what ought to be a slowdown in the can. You know, and working seventy-hour weeks to try to do Chair's Act at ARPA stuff, you know, and I don't think that the workload is gonna be any less. I think it's gonna be more, as we go forward, it's just gonna be more.
Jackie?
Questioners, one thing that I'd like to emphasize is that Bailey truly is the head of a department, and I think, you know. I'm fortunate to, to have her as part of our team, that's how we consider her. She is investing in a lot of additional responsibility this election season for my team, because of the situation that we're at. But I would really like you to really consider, I don't want her to move out, but I want her to be considered as a department head. And treated as such, because she does report to a lot of people, and not only internally, but outside, she's the representative. But we're talking about the request for mill levy funds, she, she does above and beyond, and I know I tried to encourage her this morning, and she did a great job. You know, it's hard to talk about yourself, and we've come a long way, we've grown, we're almost to where we were at, if we've not already surpassed. When we had Sheila Schermesler here as the grants manager, that everyone learned to respect and admire, and I think. Bailey has proven herself, and that consideration should be given, so thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, and Jennifer, I had you, you had your hand up, but you brought it down, I don't wanna miss you. If you guys have to say. Okay.
You know, ten years ago, grants manager made eighty-five thousand, and the grants load was probably a third now.
Yeah, but there are.
Can I just say one thing about the position as well, I'm gonna echo, like, how fortunate we are to have him, so I'm new to being the county nurse manager. I went to our first managers' meeting in Saratoga, and I sat there, and I turned to the regional supervisor multiple times, saying, I don't know what they're talking about. I have no idea what this is, and she's like, don't worry, you have a Bailey, that's why you don't know what they're talking about. I mean, this position is definitely something that I agree with Sheriff Applehands, that we wanna treasure and keep somebody who's so good at it. Because honestly, if I had to manage all these grants, I, I mean, I don't even know what I would do, so I would just say. That we should be very thankful, because apparently, we're like one of the only counties that actually has a grants manager as well, or director, grants director.
So, Mr., sounds like you all are fine with ten thousand?
I am.
I am, and I would, I would actually go seventy-two-five.
I'm good with ten.
I'm good with ten, I mean, we just moved up, and then that puts a smack dab in the middle of the grants manager range. Between sixty and eighty, and so, so I have ten thousand for the grants manager position, and fifty-nine hundred for the grants assistant, so a total of fifteen thousand.
Yep, that's what I have.
And.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well done, and then IT last, yesterday, requested from Christina, was eighteen-nine-three-six. We went sixteen-six-three-six, and Adam was in and out of here, but any thoughts or, or ideas going forward?
Yeah, and Adam's not gonna like this, but I really felt uncomfortable yesterday after, and after I left and all, and. I have to say, I was woefully ignorant of the raises that Adam has gotten, because part of them came before I was on this board, and so he.
Or that position, that position.
Oh, that position, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
In two nineteen, he was making sixty-eight, sixty-fifty, and in a year, he went up eleven thousand, and then last year, went up another. Six thousand, if we approve what we talked about yesterday, that's over twenty-eight thousand in three years. I'm a little uncomfortable with that, quite honestly, and now. I, as I thought about it more, and I have had this conversation in passages with. With others that I had, I didn't like, or I would not go with any of our, our department heads making more than an elected official, just for the weight and the responsibility and the cost of having a. Campaign, and having done that in two different positions, school board as well as county commissioner, I know what it takes, and, you know, you're vulnerable to your constituents and, and also. Our unelected officials, uh, unelected department heads have that ease, which we've all talked about, and also. I'm not comfortable at what was discussed yesterday, people that you and I sort of decided on. And now that I have more knowledge, and I just really was feeling some angst with. Putting Adam above, sorry, this position, above county elected officials.
I'd like. Give me, would you guys give me that way, just so I can address you directly, I've been working over here, would that be okay?
Sure, you bet.
Just a moment, I apologize to interrupt.
Okay.
I have to say that I, I don't think, I don't, I'm not inclined to compare. A higher position to an elected one, because I don't, I think it's apples or oranges, like, my mind doesn't go where yours goes. Mine goes to what the market, the responsibility, the value, the expertise, the market. And so. To me, I don't think pay says you're more important than an elected official, or we don't understand what elected officials go through to be elected, or whatever, right? If, if you choose to, to serve your community by running as an elected official, you're signing up for a process that hired people. I, I just don't think that those are comparable, but in my mind, the question is, what is? In my mind, the question is, what is competitive pay for a position like that? Sometimes I can't impose my feelings on, you know, or my sentiments on what. On what the market says a position is worth, like, maybe I don't think. Quarterback should make thirty million dollars a year, but the market says they do, right, so. The, the, that's an extreme example, but that's, that's the basis for my thoughts on it, like, I don't, I don't need to tie it. that, that's, that's the basis for my thoughts on it. Like, I don't, I don't need to tie it to elected official pay. Now, the question is, if, whether that salary is is competitive and probably government can never compete with the private sector. You know, maybe if, if somebody is really a franchise, you know, the bell cow to herd the best, you, you know, they can make seven hundred and fifty K doing software development or writing code or something somewhere, you know, I don't know. We have a unique set of circumstances here funding wise and, you know, government is government, right? So for me, I'm trying to like sort of the the clumsy limits of bureaucracy and, you know,
Well, and I appreciate that, Heber. And all of our employees realize when they're working for government, they obviously could make more out in the private sector. Tracy could be making a lot more than she, she does, but they're chosen to be in here, including Adam. And he knows that, you know, it with government, there is a finite, uh, finite amount that he's going to get paid. I'm supposed to out in the, um, public sector. And so
Yes, because government's not entrepreneurial and business is, right? So you, you, you know, when you put somebody's skills to work for you in the private sector, you get a return on that investment. In, in government, you know, we aren't out generating funds by providing services. We're, we're just trying to, you know, it's public, so we don't get to be entrepreneurial, so we probably don't have the option to pay the way the private sector does. It's just one of the, it's just built in, baked in the cake. It's the way it is.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and then we'll go to Christina. She's got her hand up.
Appreciate it. So my understanding is these numbers are based on the government sector. You're not even looking at a private number range set, at least from my discussions with Christina in this data collection. So the, to, to compare the two is a bit apples to oranges in those regards because these numbers are taken from comparable apples to apples positions within those same industries, within the same base set point. Um, speaking to my, um, employment history here, I wasn't brought in as an IT director. I started here, I actually interviewed as a project manager. And then two weeks after my interview, was told that essentially there's an opportunity to take on the department. And I stepped up and did so. And so that's, that's looking at the fallout that initiated when I came in. Um, and the change of position between those times, um, and then the bump, the mid-year bump that you saw there was, uh, an alignment to where it needed to be in those times and what was discussed with HR, with the commission, so on and so forth. I, I don't know if it's really fair to look at my history. I don't know if we've looked at anyone else's history here.
Well, I was gonna point out that
I thought we were living
That we got a, we got a value because you started out underpaid. So part of that, those big jumps and corrections were us. Bringing it to where it needed to be. And then as it went, he always performed better, stepped up, um, took on more responsibility. Basically redesigned all of our hardware and our network architecture so that it didn't look like a barn full of baling wire, you know?
Yeah, I was part of those conversations that we did not know what we needed.
Right.
We did something different. And so we did hire two people to, to manage it and figure out what we were going to do next. And so Christina, why don't you add to that conversation you were, or?
Yeah, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Gotcha.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I wanted to kind of comment and piggyback on what Heber had indicated during the conversation. Um, I don't think comparing elected officials and department heads is apple to apples. Um, one of the things that we discussed very heavily when we looked at the salary survey and what you guys asked me to do was do a true market value of this position. Those are the numbers that I presented. Those are the numbers that are in front of you. Um, during my conversations with each of the departments and the elected officials, you know, we talked a lot about that. Whether or not are, are elected officials equal to the department heads? Yes or no? Um, and the consensus, or at least my perception of the consensus, even from the elected officials was, no. You know, they know what they're getting into when they run. They understand what the salaries are because you guys set them. Um, and that is something that they're choosing to do. Um, I'm gonna call Tracy out, but she had her, her and I had a really good conversation about it. And I think what she said was very valuable. Um, she said, you know, we don't want to lose good people because we compare the two. Um, and I'm paraphrasing, that is not a quote from her, but essentially, you know, people like your department heads that come in, um, come in not comparatively to, to elected officials, but yet we're in that same realm. And the county has always made the two equal, but we're not actually equal. And so in my opinion, one of two things need to happen. You guys, if you want to keep department heads like elected officials, then you make us the same. And our salaries are the same and we get unlimited benefits like elected officials. And we understand that there is no difference as far as the benefits are concerned. If you guys want to make us different, then you really need to look at the salary survey. That's what you guys asked me to do. And those were the numbers that were given. Um, and Adam is spot on. The research that we did focused very heavily on governmental settings. Um, we also looked at states that don't have sales tax because, um, we don't, or not sales tax, I'm sorry. Help me out, not sales tax. State tax, thank you, yes. And compared those, but everything we did, with the exception of the general like salary dot com and some of those were based on governmental setting. And so Adam is right, those numbers that you saw in the survey are based on other governmental entities in the states that surround us. So in my opinion, it needs to be one or the other. Either make us somewhere to elected officials, if that's about you guys want to go, or truly look at that market data. Um, and pay those people appropriately. And so I, I don't know if that added anything to the conversation, but I, I would have to agree with Heber in his regard that they're not the same. Um, nor should they be compared the same due to the nature of work, um, and the degrees that come with that and the certifications that come with that and all the training that comes with that. Um, and not saying that the elected officials don't have that because a lot of them do. However, their elected positions, they know what they're running for and what those benefits are. So in my mind, they are two separate types of classification.
Christina, I just gotta push back a little bit. Last year would be ARPA money to everybody in the county. Elected officials got that ARPA money. And so there is some disparity and I'm not sure exactly what
Sure. And I actually don't disagree with that statement at all. You're absolutely right. Elected officials did not get that. But if I recall, we had that conversation then and we said some of the same similar things. You know, that was a discussion. Are department heads gonna get it? Are they eligible? Um, and you guys chose to give it to the department heads. And so I think that just kind of reiterates what I'm saying, though. The positions aren't the same. And so if we want to limit, I'm gonna speak to the IT position specifically because that's what we're talking about right now. If you want to limit the IT position and there's heartache about him making more than an elected official, I think we're just kind of spinning in circles and we're, we're going back and forth with what we are and what we're not gonna do. Um, and unfortunately, I do think that if that's the decision that's made by the commission, no disrespect, I think you're gonna lose good people. Um, because while money isn't everything and what we offer and our benefits are extremely important, um, with the cost of living and, you know, going up and the seven percent inflation, when we have someone that can go back to the university and make ten thousand dollars more, they're gonna do that. We're, and I presented that during the budget. You know, we're losing positions back to UW. And when I first got here, we were stealing positions from UW. And so I'm just saying, you know, whatever you guys decide, take all of those things into consideration. I don't believe that they're apples to apples. And that's what we did the salary survey for. That's why we gave you the data that we gave you so that you guys could see where those positions actually fall.
Okay, so my, my second part, you didn't answer, what are the benefits that the elected officials get?
Yeah, so I was just simply referencing the difference in, um, like uh, the, the time off. You know, they don't, they don't track sick or vacation time is unlimited. We do as department heads. Um, they don't get paid out for it. We do as department heads. Um, and so that, I was just using that as a reference, saying that, you know, it's even before this commission, it's always been, you know, department heads and elected officials are equal. Um, but it, we're really not because we're both getting different sets of benefits. And so I was just pointing out that if that's where we're going or saying that they can't make more, um, we've never really had the same benefit, if that makes sense.
I think it's elected officials.
They don't get PTO, they don't get a time and a half, and they don't get the three thousand dollar bonus. So there was a time, Christina, and I know you're familiar with this time, that elected officials and department heads didn't make the same amount. And so, um, that's not the history of Albany County. It's longer, been a longer history in my understanding. Where department heads and elected officials make different salaries. Only in the recent past has they, have they made the same salary. So I just want to correct the record and say, you know, as long as we're dealing with this, let's deal with it, you know, openly. Um, and so
So I, can we approach it from this position standpoint, or
Uh, sure.
Do I have to continually fight an ideology that you just corrected?
I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, that if we impose some sensibility on the market that we have, the market may not agree with our sensibility, right? If we have feelings about how we want it to be, it doesn't mean that the market agrees with that.
Yep.
That, so, so the point is, there's a bunch of things happening here, right? There was a time when, when, um, and right now, our department heads aren't like this. Everybody has a different role and a different responsibility. Ours are, elected officials are statutory, you know? We make job descriptions and stuff for our department heads, right? So the whole notion of conflating pay with, um, value or responsibility or hierarchy doesn't make any sense to me. There, there are departments that have lots of employees like Road and Bridge and there are departments that are one who manage millions and millions of dollars. And there's departments of three or four that manage all of our productivity and security all the time. So for me, I really do think it's as an elected official, I can't complain about what I signed up for. But as an employee, if I was working in, you know, in a, a professional environment, I would want to be treated appropriately. Not, not compared to elected officials, right? If we were in a private situation, you know, you could have some discussion about what managers, managers get paid versus executives. But this is government, so it doesn't, it's not the same thing. So for me, I'm still back at market, market value and it and, um, like, you know, the, the attorney works for less than market value because he chose to, chose or choose to run an elected official. So, but if we, if we want to be competitive, we have to be competitive despite our own personal sensibilities or proclivities to want to try to limit that. So, I mean, we can make any decision we want and then, you know, the consequences can be what they are, right? This isn't like a feelings discussion or, you know, comparing people discussion or about people's value or anything. This is just business. This is about how you attract and retain the talent that you want so you can function. And it wouldn't bother me to pay somebody in my own personal business more than I pay myself. If, if they can deliver more value than I deliver. I mean, there are exec, there are, there are stockholders and owners and people in this world who pay, you know, their most valuable people more than they pay themselves because because of the nature of that. So I'm not saying that, I, I'm saying that because because this is intellectual and it's business. It's not emotional. It's not about hierarchies. It's not about, um, you know, we know what we signed up for. Like if, if the attorney had to pay his deputies more than he gets paid to be competitive, then that would be a reality that that the attorney and the, and the commission would have to face, even if it somehow offended our sensibilities, right? So, so I'm fine with the presentation that that Adam is the IT director made, the IT manager made, and, and I support it.
Hey, I've got some discussion you wanted?
I just, the only thing I want to say is right? I, in, in all truth, I don't think it's fair to pitch a whole position based on, uh, what we've been calling an ideology. Uh, I feel much better that you corrected it now that there has been disparities. Um, and that makes me assume there can be a disparity in the other direction as well, historically, based on what you just said. Um, so why that would cause bad feelings, I, I don't understand personally. Uh, I feel as though the, if you're looking at the position, it is a fair request based on the numbers that are allowed in the, in the, the salary that went out. Uh, we're not even talking about me and the hours that I put in and the hours that it, I'm not even talking historically. I'm just trying to talk today and what's been going on there. Anyone else that fills that position, giving you the ability to pull it somewhat comparable in the long run after the fact, if, if I move on to another, like, right, I'm trying to look out for all of those things, not just myself. I'm looking out for my department in the long run, right? Um, hey, and I, I apologize that it's causing waves in this manner. I'm not trying to by any degree. But just like everyone else that stepped up here, they're asking for a fair shake um, based on the position that they have and the work that they do and what is asked of that position. Uh, like I presented yesterday, the position that I hold, you ask considerable amount of, um, and I think it should be funded in the same manner. That's, that's where I'll leave it.
Okay, yeah, and I, I, I do respect that conversation. And I think, so there are two things when you think about salaries, you think about, you value a person with a salary. And so to say there's no hierarchy of salary is not my experience as a human being. So whether I agree with it or not, doesn't matter culturally. Do I think you're worth more probably on the open market? Yes, right? Do I think I'll ever be able to stop you as a commissioner from getting that? Not at all. Um, we will not ever be able to pay what a person who is good in any of these offices gets. I have to live with that. That's just the reality of things. So can I do things that are helpful? Try. So that's where I'm at. And there'll be a day when somebody at David's office or somebody at Tracy's office or somebody at Jackie's office or somebody at Kurt's office says, you can't pay me enough, I gotta go. And I gotta say, thank you, we can't, right? And until this county or this state wants to fund government at the private sector level, that's where we are.
Um, to, to be clear though, this is funding based on the current government level, right? I'm not talking open market. We're not talking going to the open market. The numbers you're seeing here are based on funding at a government level.
Right.
And so I
So the sheriff's numbers were higher based on a market level. The, the attorneys were higher based on a market level, the county attorney. And we chose a different route. Now, there's people who disagree on this commission and that's fine. I mean, that's what we're here for. I understand where you're coming from. Hopefully, we've made ourselves, uh, understood. I don't know what the outcome will be. Like many people in this county, I am grateful for the work that's done. Um, I wish more people in this county understood what a county governmental official is. It's a really amazing worker who gets less. But there is a trade-off, right?
There are I live in Laramie and I, I love the people here and I love the institution and I dedicate to that.
Yeah.
And that's a personal level. It has nothing to do with anything else but showing up and doing so. I do so with a smile.
Yeah. And so I, you know, I don't know what the right thing is. Never know that. I'll do the best I can. Um, and I'm sure you'll do it and Heber will do it and everybody else will do it. Um, but I want there to be no animosity. That's why I try to keep the Um, but I want there to be no animosity. That's why I'm trying to keep the personalities out of this because at some point Kim will be the public health nurse manager and we'll have to hire somebody to be that person. Bailey won't be the grants manager. Um, and so what will we have to do to do that? Now, whether that is or it isn't, um, where we are or where we need to be, that's just kind of what I'm thinking. I do understand IT a little bit, not much, but enough to be dangerous. I always understand the salaries. I read the salaries back and forward, right? I know it can be 166, right? I'll never get out and beat the hospital here. I know what the balance looks like.
And I'm not asking that in that regard. I'm just asking to not be pigeonholed by an ideology that isn't transitioned across the entire state, that isn't in every other county, right? That you can open the possibilities to the market in those regards here. And, and that's really it. Past that, it's the numbers. It's fair play.
Yeah, and I don't know what they do in other counties. I don't really care, um, quite honestly, because I don't think our counties anywhere here, they're counties, you know? So I think they pay the IT director 80,000 and the sheriff 100,000 in different counties. So I think that's fair. I don't know. Depends on the IT and the sheriff, right? Um, and so, um, so I, I don't speak for the county of the county commissioners association. I just speak for myself. So, and I don't know what these other guys think. Obviously, I'm sure they differ. So I can beat that enough. So guys, what we had, uh, in front of us yesterday was what we approved. Let me get to that. Um, we had 18936 was requested from Christina's salary. Um, and we approved 16636. So does anybody want to do changes to that?
So was the, if I remember right, your request is Christina's request. So where
I
where did you go beyond that?
No, I just stood on Christina's request. Um, we left here on good terms where it was left yesterday. Um, and, and that's where it was.
Yeah, I, I would like to, to fully fund it. It's a lot of discussion about 2,500 bucks or whatever.
It's bigger than that, Eber, right? I think, I think it's a bigger discussion than 2,500 bucks. Um, and so.
My father-in-law managed Water Roll, you know, the Iridium project. He had a bunch of software writers, wrote the, the, uh, the tasking software for the, the global satellite phone network, the, the Osama bin Laden in Tora Pora with the sat phone or, you know, an oil tanker in the middle of the Pacific, right? And when he retired, they had no idea how much work he did. He probably made 20 years ago, probably made 130,000, right? And they had to hire three people to replace him. Like they didn't really understand how how good he was at his job or how much he knew or how fast he could solve problems and get through it. And my point is sometimes you can outsmart yourself by half. Sometimes cheap gets expensive. Learned that in business a lot of times.
I, I agree again, and I don't think anybody's casting aspersions off the job that's done at IT.
And I also remember what it was like before. Um, and I don't ever want to do that again to our people. It could seem like I'm advocating for that position, but I'm advocating for the value that position represents in addition to the person who occupies it, right? So if you have a 15% work slowdown, you know, because of IT issues over a whole bunch of years or a 20% work slowdown, that's really expensive in terms of cost of productivity. So, and we all use IT, so I'm advocating for all of our employees, all of our departments and all of their productivity. Um, because I know what it was like before. Um, the blue screen of death is real. Except it isn't now. And, uh, and that's a good thing. So, so that's, you know, for me, it's, it's about, you know, I don't, I don't want to trip over a dollar to save a dime. And I think this is one of those cases when we're talking about value.
Can you tell me what the 16636 broke down to? What, what did we end up with yesterday?
Yeah, so I, we had, uh, 9,500, the, the IT director, 6436 for the system administrator. And that cola of 700 for the IT project manager.
We did do the 646. I, I thought we did 4,000 for system.
Nope.
We went the full.
Yeah.
I did feel as though what you guys allocated yesterday was fair. And I appreciated the compromise that was coming there.
Yep. You know, Eber, you have a valid point. Uh, you have a valid point, Adam. So you have a valid point. I may not have a valid point, but I see all of your points. And so I just want you to recognize that fact that this is this ain't science, right? I want everybody to understand that there's a certain amount of personality and a certain amount of you do the best you can with what you got. We don't have top of the line lunch at the county, right? Because we can't afford it. So, and so I recognize, so whatever you guys want to.
Well, I think in this case, we can't afford not to.
Okay, fair enough. So you would go with yesterday's, uh, 16? 636.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so we'll make it to three, uh, so 16, uh, 636, um, it is, uh, it is, uh, but I guess when you go by market, you ask for market, you get what you ask for. Gotta tell you, I wish I could revisit elected officials. Really do wish I could revisit it, um, because I don't feel I wish next time, if I'm still in this position, we will do this conversation altogether.
It won't help you feel any better, but at the time, uh, I'm going to pay the elected officials when I have to.
You did, and I, and I recognize that, yeah, yeah. Um, so that is, yeah.
I guess I, I won't be able to sleep at night unless I make this come.
Yeah.
And this has nothing to do with the IT director, anything like that, but you just raised one department head to market value and gave all the other ones a cola. I thought this whole thing was about getting people up to marketable level. And, and I look at David.
Right.
Because David's been here longer than any of the other department heads. And he's getting a cola for all the grief he takes on wind energy and all the other crap he does. And I guess I just want to advocate for the department heads. I mean, you, you yourself, Commissioner Gosar, said you're going to pull our salary report and make sure we didn't give all the money to one person, but you just did.
Well, Tracy, I got pushback against that. Every department head was in, um, the range besides, uh, the IT department head. Um, he was outside below the minimum. And so the planning director, which you used, um, is 10,000 inside the minimum, but now David's been here a while.
Um, I'm negative 5% outside of the range.
Well, according to what I see from Christina, it's 87, 42 to 134, 332.
Yeah, at my current, I'm negative 4.3 outside of the proposed range.
Right. And so, so trying to be market, right? And I, and I think, um, if I look at the other road and bridge, we're in 10,000 into the market. Um, with that now, just gotta tell you that, that I'm not sure how that values the work that's done. Um, you know, uh, human resources inside the market, uh, proposed range. Um, so.
I understand. I, I just, uh, I'm just want to be on the record. I disagree.
Okay.
For that, but maybe I can sleep when I spoke my piece.
Well, we're colleagues and I don't feel like, uh, this is, the budget is my place, uh, to work, I guess. This commission could be wrong. So. Okay, um, did you guys have that over there?
We do. Chairman.
Sure, Jackie, please.
I too would be, we miss. I, there's just, it was some, I guess, um, discouraged, discouragement on my part, um, in terms of the approach that we all agreed to with, um, wanting to serve our employees first. And, um, it's hard for me to think that one, one employee advocated for himself and not for his team. Um, and I want Adam to hear that from me because that's how I feel. And I would be two-faced if I didn't express my feelings to him. Um, this is tough and it's always been tough and I probably lived through when, um, department heads came to the board of county commissioners and said, you give us this or we're going to lock. I'm not saying that that's what Adam's going to do or what he's thinking, but it's kind of hard to swallow when there's a lot of really dedicated, um, departments and employees and elected officials that make Albany County proud. And, um, I just wanted you to hear it from me, Adam.
May I have a chance to rebut?
For sure. And then we'll go to Christina and then we'll close this out.
Not, not to, I, not to argue myself. I appreciate what's being said. Um, but in the years that I've been here and the budget increases that we give to the department, I've never once taken any of that from those budget funds. I've turned over the races to both of my staff every single time. Uh, I, um, I'm surprised the hard feelings that are being justified here.
But that's, that's it, right? We were hearing it and, and it's better with this out instead of.
Yeah, um, I, I just wanted to say that in terms of, I took that a bit personally, um, and to understand that in the three years, I've never actually taken one that was allocated from my department or myself. I've given it to my staff. Um, though they're small raises, they have never come to me. The other things have been negotiated at the commissioners' table based on the work in the department, just like we're doing right now, the job title and the work performed. And I'll leave it there.
Okay, and Christina, please.
Thank you. I just had a question for you, Pete. You, I was curious what you meant or if you would expand on your comment a little bit ago where you said, I wish now I could have reevaluated elected officials. What did you mean by that exactly?
I should have raised it, Christina.
Okay. Um, and I, I'm just curious why you have those feelings now, if you would talk to that just a little bit. If you don't mind. And I guess the reason I'm asking the question is because I made a recommendation of 10,000 at 95. Um, and you guys, you know, chose 92 and a half. And so I, it just helps me so that I can understand kind of like why you're circling back and why, why you said that now, um, what's kind of developed from then until now for you to have that feeling, I guess.
Christina, I think you've probably been around long enough to know that the budget is, uh, in exact science here because we don't get money until after June 30th, that we budget before June 30th. So hopefully you can appreciate that fact. Um, if we do it incorrectly, we'll have to redo it in a negative way going forward. So there's the world you have and the world you'd like to have, and you deal with the world you have. So the world I have is we get 1.6 million from the state, we get 1 point something from the federal government. The reason I say 1 point something, nobody really knows what we get from the federal government. We will need that number without knowing that number to balance this budget. So that's why I said it, Christina. Um, and, and the budget is the commission's work. Um, and so, um, yeah, hopefully that answers your question.
I would like to say that I, from my perspective and in all of the ways that I've articulated, this is for the most part, as best we can do it, a data-driven process.
Yep.
And I'm trying to, I've had enough of feelings.
Yeah, I'm just trying to let you go, recognize people raising their hands, Eber. Anything else? Anybody else?
Yeah, David.
Go ahead. I, please don't feel squeamish about saying your piece. I mean,
Well, um.
We're professionals here.
And we're adults.
Yeah.
I would just say that, you know, um, you know, it's kind of brought up, been brought up. We've always been connected, like the department heads and elected officials, right? Um, and so when they are raised, I was raised and, you know, when we didn't, they didn't get a raise, I didn't get a raise. So it's, we've always been connected. It's been eight years, you know, I've been department head for longer than that, but that, that eight years. Got a raise, um, you know, and so I, I just want to say that I, I am grateful for a cola raise uh, because I have not received a raise for a long time, you know? But I would like to advocate for all the department heads. Just it'd be nice to scale a little bit more, you know? But I, I appreciate your consideration. I do appreciate what you've already allocated to the budget for these new positions.
I appreciate your, your thoughts, David. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I, I'm sorry, uh, to be clear, I haven't allocated, I haven't advocated against any department or any budget in this regards, only trying to add context or add ability and prooffulness to others.
Yeah, no, I don't think anybody's alleged that. I would certainly think that. And, and I don't think the people that have spoken here are alleged against your department.
Well, it was alleged that I wasn't a team player.
Well, that's.
Well, right, see, as I remember yesterday, you did advocate for your employees. So I, somehow I, I, I had a different takeaway. But I would really like to move on.
Oh, I'm ready to move. I'm so ready to move.
I will step down. I appreciate your guys' time. I appreciate everyone's input, um, in every manner. Um, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I think that finishes that. Um, you guys have everything.
I think, oh, yeah.
Awesome. And then I guess going forward, next steps on this fair board and library board, do we need to do those? I don't.
That's just there with this, let me start over. We did a 7% increase with the assessed valuation for the county, and I usually just translate that directly to theirs. They get the same amount every month as what we call the level funding plan. Um, and those were updated from, I think it was last week or two weeks ago. It must have been two weeks ago because I was gone. Because we have the new warm amount, so it has the actual amount of warm that they pay back in 1/12th every, every month back to the county out of that.
Okay.
Plan.
Super. Thank you so much. Thank goodness we don't have to do anything.
I mean, it's part of our budget in the sense that we're going to give them whatever those amounts were. 293,381, 79 to the, um, fair board and 1,040,269.38 to the library. And then that gets advertised with our budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments about those? Okay, now to the wrap-up here, I guess, um, with the fiscal year proposed, I'm looking at this rascal in front of me. Um, I think, I'm sure these changes have been made. So on the one, two, third, fourth page, community partners would go to 1865 instead of 1665, is that right?
Yes, and I did, there was, um, it was referring to the previous column, so it is now fixed on the page I, yes. And that leaves your remaining amount of 15,822 as the bottom line, 4% optional.
Okay. You said 15,182?
Eight twenty-two.
Eight twenty-two, excuse me. You guys had made some, um, recommendations based on what we had done previously with regard to the reserves. Um, of 300,000 to the emergency reserve, 100,000 to the general reserves, the solid reserve account transfer of 520,000, transferred to county building reserve of 300,000 and transferred to contingency of 300,000. I think you told me, Tracy, about IT. We were going to have an IT reserve account for.
Yes.
Can you familiarize you with that again?
We do have an IT account and if you look at the direct aid hardship.
Okay.
I have that money going from the IT, or from direct aid hardship into IT from there.
Perfect, that's why we don't see it on the general.
And it looks like we must have just changed enough that we'd have to change those transfers because there's a negative.
We'll have to update just a couple more.
Oh, you're still up to date?
Yeah, I can't, I can't do it on this, I need.
So we'll have to relook at what we're transferring out to emergency reserve, general reserve, salary. Building and contingency just to offset the shortfall.
Good, we need to reel some of that back in.
Yeah, which, which, to make it easier on these guys, so we don't have to sit here all day, uh, which reserve account do you think? All of that.
Mr. Chairman, though, before we do that, we need to talk about still the consideration of taking salaries from. The second floor for the possibility of what you're going to do with the public health building. And so if we do that, I don't think it will be, we will have the shortfall. Correct me if I'm wrong, the mandate.
But we would still have to budget the building.
Well, we would have to, yeah. It would be a wash, but still taking that sal, those salaries out. We sh, we need to decide, are we going to do that? So that we advertise correctly and we're not.
We do, we need to do that, but we have to pick a number that we're gonna pay salaries with ARPA. And then, I mean, it's just an internal shift in columns, but we, we have to have a number picked for what we're willing to fool around with on a building.
Or it is a year, so we could pull it for a year, right? So we could pull the second floor salaries out of ARPA for a year and whatever that cap has to be.
Um, that would probably be more than what you were.
Are we?
I think I'm not.
I don't think we're required to, to, there's no requirement on the, this, this set aside for a building, we could make that purchase anytime.
We would have to have it out of.
Or rather than transferring to emergency reserves or to any of those, you buy it out of cash. We still have to budget for that building purchase, but then we don't have to shuffle anything out of ARPA and that still leaves ARPA money for. X, Y, or Z, whatever those may be.
So we could, please explain that to me so I don't understand.
So instead of doing.
This is a big deal right here.
Instead of doing any of these colored transfers.
Okay.
Like say you needed 700,000, maybe just skip those first two transfers.
Okay.
And make that building purchase.
Okay.
And then the, the salaries stay in the general fund. I mean. Unless you want to use ARPA, but that would open up ARPA for other.
I don't know that we can get there with those reserve accounts all added together.
The transfers, well, and also we need to continue the transfers.
At the cash on hand, is what you're saying.
Right. But with the, I mean, if, I, I guess I don't know how much the building, but I thought the renovations would be from ARPA.
The, the plan is the renovations are gonna come from ARPA.
Okay.
Um, Kim also has a, some more COVID money, about $500,000 that we found out there's certain pieces of a renovation that could, that could help pay that. So the problem, I believe, was the purchase of the building itself, that's kind of been the issue from day one, we tried to figure that out. And we all met with the auditors to make sure, you know, doing the salary thing would be okay. And now whatever Tracy's recommended, I'm not entirely sure, but I'm sure it would work. But yeah, I mean, that, that was the main problem, was the money to purchase the building itself. Renovations is fine, those can come directly out of ARPA.
So we basically are sitting here, we have to figure out how much that, how much ARPA money we would use so that we could. Free up that much money. We have to, here we are at the end of the budget and. Maybe we're not supposed to say, you know, when it comes to the legalities of executive session, what we're willing to pay. Or set aside to pay for a building, even if we have the discussion in executive session, anyone who reads the budget can see. Can add up to columns and see what we set aside.
Right, what I'm saying, I'm trying to make it easy, so if we set aside those salaries on the second floor for an entire year. I'm not sure what that number is.
I don't, I don't even, I don't know what that number is, but I don't think it, we would need that much, I could be completely wrong.
For the whole year?
For the whole year.
I can find out.
Because the Boot Barn building was listed at 795 and that space is bigger, however, it's completely unfinished. So, I mean, unfortunately the appraisal doesn't contain a total lie. Uh, but I mean, at least you kind of have a little bit of what to go off on.
So Tracy, which is, you deal with these.
Half a dozen wants six to the other, honestly, the mechanics of having, because what we would have to do for the, the payroll piece is have a neg, you know, a contra expenditure account, which is just negative. And then move everything, that's a lot of reliance on making sure those, the journal entries happen every, every month for the payroll for the second floor. Um, the other way is. A little bit easier, it does, it really isn't a change, it's just transferring money maybe to the county building reserve this year or whatever the case may be.
But the point is we could still do the, the. We could still use the ARPA money to pay salaries, you're just saying.
Yeah.
From a clerical stand, from a data entry standpoint.
I mean, whatever you guys prefer, we can do, I mean, it's, anything is possible.
I, we probably don't care, we just are, we're at the place where we have to decide how much, so is there any limitation as to how much. Salary we can pay with ARPA?
I don't think there's a limitation on the.
No, I mean, it's just really whatever's remaining, I think there's a little under 5 million remaining that hasn't been allocated. I mean, if you could do all of it, I would not have been doing all of it. I think ARPA is a special pot of money, we still want to keep it as a special pot of money. So, I mean, doing this salary really is to get you that purchase of the building, get you money for that, it's for a certain purpose. Um, I, I'm sure there are counties out there that are just doing salary, you know, with all their ARPA, that's what they're gonna do. The way I see it, I, I think you, you pay salary with ARPA for a special purpose. Because you need general funds for something else, not, and that's in my opinion, we can do whatever you'd like, but.
Well, and ARPA is a public health thing and the whole point is that you can't use ARPA money directly for. For. Only for renovations, but not for acquisition, you know, we wind up in a position where. And you can't supplant, so it has to be budgeted this way, right? That's the whole logic of the process.
You can.
So, so I propose, I propose we just, we pay for a million dollars worth of salaries. Out of, with ARPA and the rest will be there for the. The community and the, you know, and our organization and you need to.
Yeah, I mean, that was the question, is what is that number that we're looking at? Is it a million, is it 15?
But it doesn't mean that we spend the entire million that way.
No.
It would wind up in the general fund.
Well, and if something happens, if a break comes back and you guys are like, no, this is too much, we don't want to do this anymore. We can amend the current county budget and then all that can go up to salary and then your ARPA money is still there. It hadn't been spent yet, I mean, we've been talking about this.
The point is, you can't make that, you can't amend the budget after the fact because you're supplanting, but you can go the other way in the budget.
As long as it, yeah.
Don't make the purchase.
Yep, if you don't make the purchase, then you can amend the budget because then that's.
You can go the other way, you can't go.
Exactly, you just can't do it.
So I propose.
One year of salaries on the second floor is approximately 1,445, so, and that's excluding the elected officials, that's just.
So I'm guessing if we're gonna do that, we ought to do it for a year and that would allow you to go one time for an entire year and next year we don't. Whomever is in these positions, don't, doesn't have to.
So there's no fractional fiscal year here.
But then, then we would want to budget that 1,445.
1,445 and that's an approximation, I mean, you could do 1.5 and then you have enough, I, I, I don't know. Or do 1.4 and then.
Whatever, you know, non-transparent number.
And the transfer, I'm all, I'm about the transfer, but then the ARPA, if it reverted to cash on hand at the end of the. 2026, which I don't suspect it will. So I don't want to not fund the county reserve accounts and have this big pot of money sitting out there that we can't use. And so however we can do that where it's easiest on you guys, this office, um, I would be totally on board with, I just don't know that I can figure that out. Hopefully you tell me what to do.
So, I think they need the number and now they have it and they know how to do. The smushing.
Okay.
To, to make the, to make the columns add up to work.
My accounting teacher just probably rolled over.
You love that.
Okay, so we'll do a year at the third floor, if everybody is.
Second floor.
That, second floor.
Okay, and the same amount for building purchase. Dollar for dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might end up spending more, I don't know, but. Who knows?
Less.
Or less, right. Who knows what will happen, I don't know what.
But the remaining ARPA funds can be used relatively.
Yeah, those can come, yeah, directly at ARPA, I mean, the reason we were trying to get, you purchase the building out of your general fund. Because if you purchase property with federal funding, it gets really sticky and I would like to avoid that as much as possible.
Sure, even if it is for public health, it would still be just a big giant mess.
Yeah, so just to get, I mean, the whole reason for the transfer and luckily we've talked to the auditors, they're on board with it and. They're making it, it sounds pretty easy, I hope it's gonna be as easy as they may get found, but, uh, it's just to avoid basically the directly federal. But any renovations you want to do with that building can come directly from that ARPA funding, so it'll be, it'll be pretty easy.
God, I hope we haven't, we haven't made your guys' lives miserable. And then the reserves, I am fine with those reserves being to those accounts and the amounts, does anybody else have a different idea?
The, the only question I wanted to ask is, I always forget which, which funds are more restricted than others, right? So there's some strategy to where you put it.
Right.
Because some of it is like, in the case of a tsunami washing all the way here from, you know, the west coast. And some of it is more liquid than that, right? And I never can remember, so I probably need some help.
So the emergency reserve, and Jackie, please correct me if I'm wrong, because sometimes I turn them around in my head as well. Emergency reserve is available like immediately, should there be a, a crisis situation where I think you have used it in the past where like. The backup purchased for IT back in the, a few years ago. And then the general reserves are a little more. Restricted, I guess, and salary reserve, that's at your discretion to supplement the general fund from the salary reserve to cover some of these. Increases that we've already been talking about, the building reserve, that's covered us a bunch on change orders like with the door locks and things like that, that other funds can't. It's maybe not in the budget or they are more out of the ordinary, like a roof replacement, I think, or I think David had in. His budget or something, and then contingency, originally the seed money from that was derived from direct aid, so. I think we would have to visit. It would take me a little bit, but I could figure it out, what money came from the general fund, which I think was just the first time last year and this money. To split it out on. The use you could possibly use it for, because you could be able to use contingency, the majority of it for any kind of salaries or personnel.
Because it's directed.
Yeah.
So maybe we made a mistake transferring general fund money into contingency, because then you have to run two, so. You have to split that account internally, that's kind of a, maybe we should have made a different account.
It's, I mean, it's not that hard because last year was the first year we've done it that way and so there, I, I believe.
Should we change that, should we separate the direct aid and hardship from. You know, maybe we actually intended to just transfer to contingency, a contingency fund and we didn't. Have the realization at the moment that we were. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
And I don't know if those are invested, but you have places where things earn interest and then the, the accounting gets complicated if you're. Looking at interest proceeds and stuff like that, you know.
To a point, um, so I would say of all of these funds, the general reserve and the contingency is, is heavily invested. I mean, if we needed those monies, it would, I mean, we could get them within probably a week to two weeks, but. It is a little more finagling, it's not cash at a local bank.
But I mean, I'm asking, should we have separated, should we have kept, kept the, the somewhat restricted funds. Separate from, because we just wanted to set aside money in contingency, but, but we didn't mean to make an accounting problem for you, we could correct that.
I, I mean, I can create a new fund and, and in hindsight, I probably. Could call, I mean, easily make another fund, you know, like contingency open user, you know, less, whatever it may be. And do.
Contingency one and contingency two.
And that would be a matter of a journal entry and it's not that hard of a.
Or we could just take the money that we were gonna put in contingency, just stop that fund at four, five, five million and divide this 300,000 between those other four accounts. And go well, then you don't have to make one more fund, we just.
Yeah.
We'll just spread it out between those other four accounts.
We manage, let me tell you. 286 different funds on our books.
Yeah, so let's not make one. So I suppose we just take 75,000 and just put it into each account and don't make a contingency.
Okay, so move that.
Yep, so move that 300,000 out of contingency and move 75 to the emergency reserve, 75 to general reserve, 75 to the county building reserve and 75 to transfer salary reserve.
Okay, done.
Are there any questions that we have left unanswered? I guess in the end, guys, I, I really have to tell you, I, this has been difficult and it always is. It might be difficult when you have money. More difficult, I hope that you understand that. For me, and I think this Commission values the work that's done here. I have been a government worker in the past and I thought my work was no different as a government worker than it was as a private worker and I hate when I hear that. So I would always push back against that because I think the work that's done is amazing. The salary, I hope you heard the discussion and repeated up, I hope that doesn't cause. Any conflict because I think the longer I live, the more important it is to have cohesiveness in a workplace, but that'll be for the world to decide. So be careful what you wish for sometimes when you ask about market and how that relates, so. Bear my fair share of the blame there, I wish I would have revisited this in my mind sooner than I did. And that might have made the difference in the world, but no, um, this Commission, this Commissioner will make mistakes. And will just move on from that bit, so if we made a mistake, that was going 100 miles an hour and tried to do the best we could. I think the, the record will show that at the time this Commission has been here, salaries have gone in the right direction. Hopefully workplace has gone in the right direction, maybe not as well as everybody would have liked, but it's moving in the right direction. And so I thank you for your input, please know that we did something else, that for me, I listened to the input and I just had something else debate differently. And so I hope your staffs, tell them thanks, tell them thanks for those people at the low end for putting up with us for so long. While we could not afford them, but hopefully we are starting to afford them and giving them a livable wage. For me, that's the most important part, you shouldn't have to go for to work in government and that's my goal. So thank you for all the work that you did individually, thank you Christina for the work you did in the salary. And it's been a spirited discussion, but I'm really glad it's over, I gotta tell you. Yeah, so.
Well said, thank you.
We always clap at the end of the day, we always.
Not over yet.
Yeah, there are some things we need, please let us know and we'll call a special meeting, however we need to do to make it. Go within the timeline, I know Thursday I believe is the timeline, so. But it has to be virtual, it has to be virtual, that's for real. Thank you all, have a great afternoon.